Dave.
Hey, Greg.
Hi, guys.
Tom.
Good job.
How it?
Hey, Joe.
Chip's running late, I guess.
Yes, he is. Do you have the legal notice, Joe?
I do. The long version.
Jim.
Mickey's on.
Right. All right, Mickey with us?
Yes.
Welcome. Happy belated birthday.
Ah, thank you.
I had one recently as well.
Well, the numbers get bigger and bigger. That's the most upsetting. I feel the same.
Yep, just a number.
Although I've had a cold to beat the van.
I hear you. Okay. All right, well, we have a quorum. We expect Chip to join us as soon as he gets gets back home. So why don't we call this meeting to order? Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for November 16th, 2022. Start with a roll call of members. Jim McBane.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Michael Feely.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
And Chair Dave Hadfield here. Chip Tarbell, we expect to join us in a little bit. All right, Joe, do you have the legal notice, please?
I do. Consistent with the governor's always extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial 1301-715-8592, meeting ID 89164141588, passcode 309020. Please use that only, please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback to support the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge on request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or material or materials in the alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renault, town engineer at 71246 6308 as far as advance of the event as possible. Every effort we make to grant you your request advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessibility barrier for you. One, continue hearings. Two, 23-32 NP Morello application for a special permit and site plan approval under Article 7, Section 190-36C and Article 8, Section 190-45 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws for reductions in requirements and or standards of off-street parking and loading under Article 7 related to a proposed business office use of use of the premises. The property is shown as that 18 lot parcels of the of the A of the assessors map and is located at 5 Richardson Street, 323-33, Homack Health Properties, Inc. Application for a modification of a special permit and site plan approval decision granted pursuant to Article 7, Section 190-30C of the section in Section 190-45 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw by the Board of Appeals and filed with the town clerk on August 31st, 2016 to allow modifications to allow additional reductions of requirements and or standards of off-street parking and loading under Article 7 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws. This property is shown on map 22 Lot Postles 042 of assessors map and is located at 888 Main Street 423-34, 23-35 and B Matthews and Lisa M. Matthews. Application for a special permit under Article 4, Section 190-22A1F of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to add an accessory apartment to a single-family dwelling. Application for variance under Article 10, Section 190-66 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws related to a proposed accessory apartment. The property is shown on as map 38 Lot Postles B83 of the assessors map and is located at 12 Nelson Avenue. 523-36, Robert Ham and Martha Ham. Application for a determination and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under Article 9, Section 190-50 of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to construct in addition on existing building. The property is shown as map 12 Lot Postles 149 of the assessors map and is located at 45 Albion Street.
Thank you, Joe.
You got.
Okay, board members, as you can see, and as you know, very full agenda. We try to keep all discussions succinct and on the rails, as it were, so we can get through this before 2:00 AM. Without Chip here, I'm wondering where we begin. If we did them in order and took 596 North first, he hasn't missed a hearing, so he could catch up and read up anything he's missed. We could also go out of order. We could even take new ones where he, you know, wouldn't miss being a voter because we have coverage there.
Dave, I would suggest we take a new one only because, like you say, Chip's been on North Avenue and we might end up closing this tonight. So catching up would throw us a little bit out of whack, I think.
Okay, yeah, we do have, and Brian, you're with us? Brian, you're here? Okay. I think you're on a few of these new hearings, right? Mr. McGrath?
I am.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Is there, is there, I'm inclined to go with a new one as well, maybe more than one until Mr. Tarbell joins us. Is there any particular one you'd be willing to start with that you have your clients here or anyone else that was part of the process?
Yeah, I don't think, I'm looking like the first one I would have would be well, Chip is on that, so that, so that he's on the next two. I don't think, is Sanderson on yet? Don't you want to?
Yes, he's, Peter's here.
Oh, no, not you, Barry. I'm looking for someone, some, is, is Sanderson there? No. Barry, Barry, since you spoke up, is Peter here?
I, I saw his name as.
Yes, I'm here, Brian.
Okay. So what we can do is, if we could, Mr. Chair, we can take Mr. Ham's case, who is, that's a new case which is 45 Albion Street in Wakefield, Robert and Martha Ham.
Okay, the finding, okay.
Think it's pretty, pretty straightforward case that might kick off tonight in an efficient manner.
Okay. All right, why don't we start there and then we'll, we'll see again where we are and whether Chip has rejoined us.
Yeah, and Bob and Martha hit the lottery because they were last on the agenda.
Well, the other one is, and we did say this in previous meetings, that when we have other matters that potentially could be quick, maybe we take them up front instead of leaving them at the end. But I'm, I have a feeling based on some of the emails and correspondence we've received in the last hour that 69 Foundry Street may not be a quick discussion. So why don't we table that one for now?
Okay. And that, and that's actually not going to go forward tonight, so.
Oh, it's not? No, okay. Well, I'm glad you brought it up. We didn't, all right, so that's not tonight. Okay, this as well, we'll knock that one off. All right, so with that in mind, we will take first up the new hearing 23-36, Robert Ham and Martha Ham at 45 Albion Street.
Okay. Just be aware of me so I can get some plans organized here, if you could. Peter, did you have your plans on this?
Andrew, Andrew.
Okay, hang on, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna bring up my site plan first to familiarize the board, and then I'll let you guys bring up the architectural plans.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
No problem.
Hang on one second, folks.
Andrew, you don't happen to have the updated site plan, do you, Andy?
I can. Just give me one second. I got download.
Looking at early today.
Yep. Give me one second, just downloading it.
Thank you.
This one, Brian?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Hang on one second. Folks, I just gotta get one more thing. Caught me off guard because I didn't point on dealing with this until later.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath here representing the applicants the Hams. It is Robert, who we call Barry, and Martha, who are the owners of property at 45 Albion Street. 45 Albion Street is on the right-hand side, heading from Main Street towards North Ave. When you see it, when Andrew brings up the architecture, you'll, I'm sure you'll be familiar with the building. And what this was before, this building was before the board back in 2013, and the reason it's here is for a finding because although it meets the number of parking spaces required in the business district because the use is an office use, Barry and Martha use it for their business, so it's classified as an office use. It meets the number of parking space requirements under the calculation, but the parking spaces don't meet the the exact size and dimension and aisle width, etc. So this property was before the board in 2013. Some of this, some of the current board members might remember that. And what they did is they put a small addition on the side for access. Andrew, could you kind of circle that if you would with your cursor?
Yep, so it's right here. I'll annotate too, if I can. It's just this rectangular box right here.
Yeah, that little rectangle on the side.
Yep.
And, and is, is, their business has grown to the extent that they want to expand, so it's a pretty straightforward project. They're just adding a second floor to the building in a very tasteful manner architecturally, I think. As you'll see, as Phoenix usually does. And the building inspector, because it had been through a finding before of, under 19050, he did, he wanted this to come back to the board to, you know, to kind of rebless it with the second story going on. So that's, that's kind of the background on this. And also, it was before your board, after the addition, this was one of the, I think, one of the first signs that might have been under the sign bylaw, but the new sign bylaw, but beautiful sign. People commented still all the time, little freestanding sign out front, which is, adds great character to the, to the building. But in any event, as I said, it's a fairly straightforward proposal with setting the table. Andrew, could you bring up the architectural and explain to the board the existing and proposed conditions?
Absolutely. So, thank you, Brian, for the introduction, and thank you, board members, for having us. As you can see here, this is kind of like a graphic front rendering of what we're proposing. Before I go into what's there, I'm actually gonna scroll to what is existing. Oh, it's a little bit smaller. I'll zoom in, but this is what the existing front of the house looks like, or house office apartment or offices. As you can see, the roof is built on a knee wall. What we're trying to do is, there's two offices above right now to the left and right. When you go upstairs, we're looking to rebuild the stairs because they're a little bit tighter and not to code as it is now. And we're also trying to provide just a conference room and a bathroom and to just make these offices feel a little bit more larger, not built within the roof line. So as you can see, this is the existing. What we're proposing is actually add a dormer to both sides. So as you know, it's an older building. We're preparing to just rip the roof off because it's not really salvageable as it is and just rebuild it. And what that gains us is a new functioning stair going up when you enter the building. As you can see, this is the first floor. And then as you come up, now we're proposing an office on the left, office on the right, and then towards the back, a conference area, kitchenette and dining, and then a half bathroom. So as Brian stated, pretty simple. All it is is a dormer in the front and the back and re-framing the gable roof. So that's about it. And then here is the right elevation and then the rear.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Board members, any questions? Or comments?
No, I have no comment, Mr. Chair. I think it's within the existing building envelope, so I have no problem with this.
The, the scale of this, this building's been pretty small all along because it's a one-story, so one-story at least in appearance. So the scale of this, I think, fits the rest of the street, even the older building, so to speak, on the street as well.
Absolutely. You're not adding any windows to the side, right? Just the front?
I believe instead of single windows, we're doing double now. Actually, no, we doubled before. So keeping it very similar to how it was, with two windows on each side.
Yeah.
That seems reasonable and tastefully done, so I have no concerns.
Yep.
Okay. I don't think we received any correspondence on this from others' boards or town entities. Nope. All right, we'll open up to the public. If anyone, any member of the public wishes to ask a question or make a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time, and I will look for you. Seeing no hands, I'll close it to public testimony. So board members, we need a finding here for 19050B.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move that we grant the finding and determination pursuant to Section 19050B of the bylaw that the proposed change, extension, or alteration at 45 Albion Street based on the plan from Phoenix Architecture dated 9/13/22 shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformities to the neighborhood.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Okay, so voting members, Jim, Joe, Tom, Mike, want to stand in on this one?
Sure.
Right. So voting members, Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that is unanimous. All right, findings approved. All right.
Thank you.
All like that.
Don't leave.
Good luck.
Just seeing, I do not see Chip yet. Brian, is there another one you would, another?
You are. I can take, is Anna Morello here?
Thought I saw her on earlier. I think I see her.
Anna, are you here? If she's not, I'm gonna go without her.
I see Anna Morello. She's just not on, she's not coming off mute yet.
That's okay. She's here. So if you could give me, give me a moment to key this plan up.
I think I got it now. Hi, sorry about that.
So, how are you?
Good.
Good. Okay.
All right, so this new hearing is 23-32, Anna P. Morello at 5 Richardson Street.
Correct.
And I'll look at the file while you're doing that.
Yeah, I'm loading the plan. Second. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. Attorney Brian McGrath representing Anna Morello, the applicant, property situated at 5 Richardson Street in Wakefield tonight. The property is, and I'm gonna bring the, bring the site plan up. Let me see here. There we go. Can you see that? Is that showing? Great. Can you still see that or no?
Yes.
We can.
Seeing the plan? Okay. So the property, as I mentioned, is situated at 5 Richardson Street. It's entirely within the business district of the town of Wakefield. This property was for years, I believe, like a hair salon or a beauty spa or that type of use. And around 2012 or so, it was sold to the St. Germain Foundation Corporation, which is a religious organization. In, in 2013, I brought that before the zoning board. And although the use as a church is allowed in the district and, in fact, allowed under the Dover Amendment, exempt, is exempt under 48, Section 3 from, from zoning, it is still subject to the bulk requirements of churches. So we came before the board and we sought and received the special permit under Section 19036C as it relates to parking requirements because the church with its, has numerous, you know, seating and benches, so it needed quite a bit of seating. And so 1 to 19036C, we were seeking relief from Article 7 of the bylaw as it relates to parking requirements and driveway requirements. And as you can see from this plan, the driveway and the parking is, is not up to current standards, but it's been there. It's, it's, it's it's legal, it's nonconform. It's, 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 it's legal, it's non-conforming, but it doesn't meet the requirements. And at that time, we received the special permit allowed relief from such things as driveway width, parking space size setback because the spaces are a little bit small. But more importantly, it was the number of parking spaces because the church required, as I said, a number, a significant number of parking spaces compared to a business use. So Anna Morello was the, is the owner of R.J. Morello Plumbing and Heating, and they are under contract to purchase the property. And they want to operate their business offices at the property, which is a one-story building with offices on the first floor. And they're going to use the basement for storage of materials and supplies. They are not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building except for dealing with deferred maintenance issues. I was out at the property today. It's been vacant for some time. It's in need of a lot of tender loving care. It's got an old canopy, so the Morellos are going to clean that up. They're going to paint it. And they're actually going to purchase, as I mentioned, and own the, own the building as part of their business. The, the two thousand thirteen special permit contained a condition, and it said, this decision of relief granted herein is solely for the religious purpose. So in essence, what the board was saying is if you're going to change use on this with a deficient parking lot that exists, you've got to come back to the board to do that, and that's why we're here tonight. As I've mentioned, there was no relief needed for the number of parking spaces. The building is approximately a thousand square feet, as we confirmed with the assessors. That requires only four parking spaces under our bylaw. So we could say we're, we're exempt from the number of parking spaces except for the deficiency, the other deficiencies in the parking lot, which have been there forever anyways that I mentioned. The other conditions in that decision, and I believe I provided the board a copy of it, it had a provision that allowed Saint Germain to install an exterior handicap ramp in the board of retained jurisdiction on, on that, if it was ever done. That was never done. I was out there today. The board also retained jurisdiction as to the approval of signage, as you normally do, and, and that was that there's no signage that was ever put at the property. And finally, there was a condition on the church that said there'll be no more than thirty-five seats, you know, for congregation. So obviously, that won't be applicable here. And as I've mentioned, the decision in the relief was granted solely for the religious purpose and use. So what we, what we are here is respectfully requesting a new special permit. Building inspector is requiring that, as he should, with site plan approval for reductions in the requirements of standards of Article seven related to the proposed business office use of the property that we're proposing. To tell you a little bit about the Morellos' business, it's a family-owned business, as I've mentioned. Their hours are modest. Anna said they usually like seven to three or seven to five every day, so they're not open all the time. They currently have five employees. The only type of vehicles they have are, are, you know, typical vans, not, not box trucks, but just like basic small vans that the plumbers use when they come to your house. And they currently have a fleet of about five or six vans. So they do plan on having the vans probably stay there at night. And then the, the technicians, when they come in, will park their car and they'll take the van out for the day. They currently only have one employee in the office that does paperwork and bookkeeping, so it's not like there's going to be a big operation going on on a daily basis. I think this is a very good use for a property that needs a new owner and a new use to bring some vibrancy to it and, and deal with the deferred ma- maintenance. And the Morellos are certainly excited to, to move their business there and get things going. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have. Board members, good.
So Brian, so I get, by what you said during the day, there'd be five employee vehicles plus the person in the office, total of six.
Maximum. I think right now, Jim, they only really have four vans, and I'm just saying five.
Okay. And so do they, does that, do they have people come off the street? Stop by, pay a bill, whatever?
No. No.
So the seven spaces basically will basically service this, as you said earlier.
Yeah, and that meets the requirement under the zoning for, for a business office. But, but from a, but it meets the requirement from a practical perspective also, Jim. And I think that's what you're looking for. It does, you know, notwithstanding it meets the requirement, does it meet it in reality? And I think, I think it does both.
So is the plan to put signage up? Is the plan to put the handicap ramp in?
Well, I think they want to put signage up. If the board wanted to reserve, you know, they would either meet the requirement, but if the board, you know, under your site plan review jurisdiction, wanted to retain jurisdiction on that, we have no issue with that. Happy to come back to the board and, and, and do that. Because I think they eventually will want to put a sign up, but they don't know what yet.
Yeah, that's fine. I guess my, my concern would be that we do remain have control over it because even though this may be a business district, it's sitting right in a residential neighborhood. I mean, everything that's around it is residential, so it has to be done.
You know, I was there today. I mean, as you, as you come down from Main Street, th- this side is the condominium complex.
Yeah.
And this is a long driveway that goes in, so there's really not a lot happening here. You have a, a two-family residential about a here, you have some residences across the street. And then you have the, you have the, the Dave Barrett multifamily on this side.
Yeah.
So I think the sensitive area from the residential perspective, Jim, is, is probably in this area here. And I don't think it would be real practical to have a sign over here. I don't think it would really serve a lot of purpose, but I understand your concern in that regard.
Well, I wouldn't see the sign over there. I would see it more towards Richardson.
Yeah, that's what I would think too.
I mean, you drive into it, yeah, there's some more commercial stuff here, but it very much on the edge of the residential, so whatever's done there, we should look at. Plus, it has, it has the house residential appearance to it. It's not like a, a real office building. It's a house that's been converted over time.
Correct.
I guess that's my, my only questions.
Okay, anyone else? Greg? We did receive correspondence from the town engineer, Colin Com and the fire department, foresee no concerns with the proposed change of use at the, at the location. I have no concerns, seems reasonable, again, tasteful. I would reserve or retain our jurisdiction over future signage, should they want something just to carry that forward as we do with, with many projects. But other than that, I have no concerns. And I don't, I don't, if I can, Mr. Chair, Anna, are you there?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I don't think you, you don't plan on constructing a handicap ramp, correct?
No, no, no.
No, because that was the second question that Mr. McCain had.
No, we don't have a lot of people come in because we service commercial. So everything's done on the computer.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that's a driving factor. I'd leave it to the building department, basically, because you, you can't say just because, you know, we're this, we don't need a ramp. The code, as far as accessibility, is quite stringent on certain things. So it's more of a building code than it is a zoning code. Just, I just bring it up only because it was one of those things originally that was going to happen because it was a public place. And so it's something I think you need to discuss with the building department as to what they think.
Well, if that's the case, then, Jim, you know, I would request that the board consider keeping that condition in that was there for Saint Germain. And that was that the petitioner may install the handicap ramp that matches the style and character of the building so long as it does not impact the asphalt drive as shown on the site plan. The board retains jurisdiction as to the approval of the specifications of the handicap ramp prior to its installation. So you, you know, would have to come back to the board for you to approve it, but at least it would contemplate that we could do that.
Yeah, that would be a safe bet.
Okay. And then it was the board retains jurisdiction to the approval of signage relating to the property. Tom's fine. All right, and hearing nothing else, we'll open up the public testimony. If any member of the public wishes to make a comment or ask a question about the information on this project, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, I will close it to public testimony. So Brian, this is Yeah, we're requesting a grant of a special permit and site plan approval, granting relief from the, or for reduction in the standards of off-street parking on, on the property for deficiencies in the requirements of Article seven of the bylaw as shown on the site plan to allow for the office use, proposed office use as presented. Okay.
So moved.
Sounds good. It was, it was well stated, so the motion has been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? And Mr. Chair, with those conditions that we talked about with the handicap ramp and the signage? Yes, with those stated conditions and the plans as presented. Yeah. All right, Greg, you want to step in on this one? Yes, now we can. Yes. All right, so then voting members, Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg? And I vote yes, so that is unanimous. Right? That special permit is approved. Thank you. Good luck to you, Ms. Morello.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, and for the record, do we have Mr. Chip Tarbell with us this evening?
I do. You do.
Welcome. Hopefully, the traffic wasn't too horrendous.
It was horrible. Thank you.
Well, welcome. So what we did, I did, we opted to take two new hearings that Brian had just so that you wouldn't have to catch up in case five ninety-six did proceed. And we thought we were maybe ready for a vote, then they would, wouldn't get into a sticky situation with you having to catch up or not being able to vote and that kind of thing, so.
No problem.
It was a point all raised by another member, so. So now, why don't we go back to the start of the agenda as as published with the continued hearing at twenty-two dash thirty-nine zero North Ave, Wakefield LLC at five ninety-six North Ave.
Mr. Chair, you want to boot me?
Yes, and you are going to timeout.
See you in a few.
Yep. So Joe Pride has been put in the waiting room. He has recused himself from this hearing. And we are ready to proceed, so Jesse?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, members of the board. For the record, my name is attorney Jesse Shomar. I represent the applicant Zero North Ave LLC on this chapter forty B project. With me here tonight, Mr. Chair, are my entire development team, including Chris Barages of Williamson's Barages, our civil engineer of record, Andrew and Peter Sandors of Phoenix Architects, architects of record for the project, as well as I see Stephen DeFuria from Phoenix as well is also on the line. Elliot Brundage from Elliot Brundage Landscape Architecture, our landscape architect of record. And we're represented tonight by Derek Roach, our traffic engineer for the project, as well as our client Dana Lopez, representing management and ownership of the project. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to give just a brief overview of what's been happening since the last time we were before you. It's been about six weeks since last time we had substantive hearings on this project. And so I'd like to just let you know what we've been doing and, and discuss next steps after we, we go through the revised plans that were submitted to you last week. But just briefly, because I know you have a long agenda tonight, Mr. Chair. Since we were last before you, we did have a chance to meet with the town engineer, Bill Renaud. We met with him on October the nineteenth to go over his comments and feedback with respect to the civil plans on the drainage and stormwater management report that was filed with the board. It was a very positive meeting, and there were a number of issues that we discussed with Mr. Renaud, including issues that we've discussed with the board as well, including maintenance improvements in the public right-of-way that are shown within the limits of North Avenue. The precise location of the pedestrian beacon that will be installed to, to improve safety conditions for pedestrians going across North Avenue, as well as a request by Mr. Renaud to work with the MBTA with respect to the location of the bus stop on North Avenue in that vicinity. He'd like it to be moved a little bit closer to our site to, to be in a more optimal location accessible to more residents of this building as well as the adjacent buildings. We submitted just today, actually, a letter to Mr. Renaud that was for record, that was responding to his comment letter that was submitted to this board earlier in the process. And we're expecting him to respond to that with his, potentially his final sign-off letter in the coming days. So unfortunately, that's not available tonight for the board's review, so we, we may need to go to a next hearing. But we do expect that to be forthcoming imminently. We also had a chance, Mr. Chair, to meet with the TAC. That was also the same week as our meeting with Mr. Renaud. It was on the twenty-first of October. And it was a very brief meeting and, and again, very positive with no major comments. The, the members of the TAC in general liked the plan modifications that we've been going through with the board members. They were happy with the parking count and the arrangement of parking and how we plan to manage that with respect to limiting the number of spaces for residents, guest parking and, and electric vehicle parking spaces. And they also supported the relocation of the bus stop and working with MBTA to do that, so we're, we're certainly in support of that as well. TAC indicated to us that their comment letter would be filed with the board before tonight's meeting. I heard from Bill Renaud earlier today, who I guess was, was working on the draft. And I, I gather that it must not have been filed with the board prior to tonight, so we would expect that to be forthcoming also in the coming days. Mr. Chair, with respect to the, the plans that were filed with the board last week, our full team is on, as I mentioned before. And I'll ask them in just a moment to run through real, real briefly the, the changes. At, at this point, I would say the, the revisions were very minor in all respects. We're really at the point of nip-tuck with respect to the civil details, the drainage, the grading, some of the, some of the materials and selected objects and, and the, the bike station, the cover, things of that nature, very, very specific details. So I'll, I'll ask my team to go through those in detail. In addition to the, the revised plans, we submitted for the board's review an operation and maintenance plan for the site operations, which detail the parking lot, de- detail the loading spaces, moving operations, snow storage, and how the site is going to generally operate on a day-to-day basis in, in events where, where there are disturbance of, of the site and, and the need to, to manage disruptions to ensure that operations flow in, in the intended fashion. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll pause to ask if the board members have any questions of me. And if, if, if you don't, or if you do, and, and we can get through those, I'd go to our, our development team to real briefly run through the plans.
Board members, any initial questions or comments?
No.
Okay, let's proceed.
Thank you. Perhaps we could go to Peter to run through his architecture plan first.
Sure. Me, see, share here.
And as Jesse said, please, everyone focus on the changes. We've certainly seen the plans several times, so let's just focus on the changes. It's the last time you've been here.
You can see it now, the plan.
We can, although it's not full screen for some reason.
There we go. There you go. The, actually, we've made no changes to the plan since it was last submitted to you by us on nine twenty-eight twenty-two. So this is the plan that we've carried forward. All of the unit counts, everything's remained the same, the changes that we discussed, the siding, the roof systems, window layout, it's all remained the same heights. And I think most importantly, the renderings and the color that we spent a fair amount of time on, getting them coordinated with Elliot and Chris so that you're seeing what, what they're presenting as well. So the, this is what you saw then. So the this is what you saw then. This is the color scheme you saw then. These are the materials that you saw then, still embedded in the not packet. So we're actually at the same spot we were at that time.
Okay, and Peter, do the final renderings represent or show? Or are consistent with the landscape plan?
Yes.
That other rendering that showed trees and locations, that's.
Yes.
That's consistent.
A lot of time with Elliot discussing that with the rise of trees, heights, etc. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Peter?
Nope.
All right.
Thanks, Peter. Could we could we then go to Elliot for him to go through his landscape plan?
Here, I think you have to X out.
I'll share. There we. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
You can see the screen now?
Yes.
Okay. The changes since nine fourteen with respect to this project. We were asked to identify an opaque fence, which is budding the Knights of Columbus property on this right-hand side, so we we included that in the. The products cut sheet manual, which you have probably in front of you. We also, there was a quest request for cut sheets for chain link fencing, which also appears in that products manual as well, and that's. That's a safety fence which runs along the back retaining wall here. And thirdly, we added the bike pavilion, a covered pavilion. It's open, open-sided. It's got, and it's it's got the same amount of spaces for six or seven bicycles. Beneath the shelter, and that is located adjacent to the dumpster area here in the back. Originally, we had it in the front, but one of the board members had suggested putting it in the back. In this area here, and one other change, we we added a port-in-place concrete. With an integrated cur- a concrete curb walkway and handicapped ramp. In this area on along this parking lot along the rear. And we kept the, excuse me, the pavers, decorative pavers. Along the front arc walkway at the proposed fire pit area and then the grilling station area. And that essentially summarizes the changes, and Chris will discuss. The depression areas, which are part and parcel to the landscape, but he he has a much better handle on. What the requirements are for that. So are there any questions for me?
Elliot, I don't see any notation on this. Or Chris's stuff for irrigation.
Yeah, Jim, I believe that was going to be covered through. Rigante and Sario doing that legally. That that was my understanding as as far as how that was going to get covered.
So I could I could comment on that. So Jim, what we could do, we could do this in in one of two ways, whichever your preference would be. First of which, we could add a note to the plan, or second, we could simply make this an issue of a condition in the in the decision of the board. I suppose we could do both at the same time, so we, you know, happy to do either, whichever is your preference.
We we've normally done this because we don't know what the layout will eventually be. Is we've done it as a notation on the landscape plan.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that that's included in the the next submission, Jim.
Thanks.
Okay.
Great. So Chris, you want to take over to talk about the updated civil plan?
Sure, and I'll I'll be brief. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, welcome, Chris.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And this is the revised site plan set. I'll flip through and. And really, the only changes that that we made to our plan since the last time we met. Back in September was following our meeting with Bill Renault with regard to. Stormwater management and. Wanting to try to capture as much water. That's flowing over the the landscaped surface in front of the building here where we have our sidewalks and our landscaping. Bill suggested throwing in a couple of small depressed areas. To capture some of the overland runoff to limit. The amount of surface water runoff, even though it's rather small across the front of the building here, because it is a landscaped area. Limiting the amount of water that makes it out to North Ave. And so we added some a total of four small slightly depressed areas that are a foot to a foot and a half deep. Here, in the middle of our. Sidewalks here and here, and then over on the opposite side of the entrance here. And these depressed landscape areas are going to act very much like rain gardens. They'll have the ability to provide some treatment for the water that's running off of some of these hardscapes. And other than that, we we did some more coordination. Between the landscaping plan and our plan to make sure that we depicted, for example, the the outdoor. Bike area here, and just making sure that our that our drawings matched up with Elliot's just as much as as we could. One of the things that we talked about at the last meeting. Mr. McBain had asked us to make sure that we memorialized the different fence types. On our plan specifically, which guardrail goes with which fence. And going through the drawings as I was preparing my presentation tonight, I realized that I didn't do that. So with the final set that we send along to you folks, I want to make sure that we address Jim's comment from last time. That that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions, board members?
Yeah, I'm is the landscape plan gonna address the new soils in front of the building?
Yes, it already does, Chip. Elliot has updated his plan to to reflect those small depressed areas.
Because I'm kind of concerned about how they get maintained and what they look like from North Ave.
Sure, so so that was a question that that was brought up by Bill Renault as well. And we're going to include the operation and maintenance, an operation and maintenance plan for the depressed landscape areas in our. Operation and maintenance plan for the for the stormwater management system. Those those items, Bill has asked us to send him annual reports. Because he'll be able to take credit for some of those treatment areas that are within the right-of-way of North Ave. They help him meet certain goals that the town is supposed to achieve every year relative to your EPA MS four permit.
Okay, I'll be looking. I gotta look at the landscape plan a little more carefully, because.
Chip, I was gonna ask the same question. Can we actually talk about what they're gonna look like? I think we glossed over it with Elliot. I thought we would. Understand in this presentation what. What's going to be in there? It's just a grassed area? Is it sort of like we're doing across the street at the head of the lake where it'll be?
Yeah, Chris and I discussed the amount of infiltration and what. These areas, depressed areas, are going to capture as far as water quantities are concerned. It's going to infiltrate pretty fast. So there not going to be any real standing water in these depressions, and correct me if I'm misspeaking, Chris, please. I have kept the screening capabilities as we've discussed in many meetings prior to this one. At each of the areas, particularly around the the fire pit area and the grill station, so we we maintain some evergreen screening in this area. We have not changed. The cadence or the the species of the trees of the. The red maples, which are known as swamp maples as well, which which do well. In wetter soil conditions, so we we've we have those here. We also have another one down here, which is actually outside of this first depressed area. Then moving along to this area, the the site entrance, we we planted, I, again, I've maintained this. Evergreen screening with blue spruce at the top, so those reside at the top. Portion of this depressed area adjacent to the the sidewalk, so they're not. In the lowest elevation of this depressed area, so if in fact this does get rain in it. Maybe the rain will sit for a day or half a day, it'll drain fast, and and these plants will do just fine in that condition. Likewise, I've added, I've changed the the species from. From a flowering crab at the top of the. Parking area here to Nissisilvatica, so that is more of a tupalo, which is, which again, is a tree that tolerates. Wetter soil conditions, so I think that's a better option. We're getting the same sort of color, fall color out of them, a beautiful red vibrant color, so. I think that was the right choice to put there. Other than that, the smaller shrubs. And the grasses that will be incorporated into this, the finer detail planting plan. Will be also tolerant of the conditions, both dry and wet conditions that these depressed areas are going to. That they're going to have.
So what is the actual depressed area? Is it grass?
So I can show you that detail. Elliot has has it on.
The detail is right here, Mr. Tarbell. It's right down in the lower left-hand corner. So foot and a half to two feet of planting soil, planting mix, mixed with sand, topsoil and compost. At the bottom, we've got the drainage material, coarse gravel. Lots of voids, and then the pea gravel, and then the sand substrate under that, sitting on existing grade.
Okay, but what I'm looking at is what's the top mulch?
That's that's mulch at this point, yes. So around each of the the trees, we will have a.
Big depressed mulched areas.
Directly out in front of the property, too.
Yes, this, these are evergreens, so the mulch bed will be underneath the evergreens, which will have branching down to.
Right, so what I'm trying to get at is what is, there's a big depressed area at. Eighty-five or whatever that. Is is that grass mulch? What is the?
It could be it could be grass, except where we need it around the trees, yes.
Could be.
Yes.
What's the plan?
So the detail, the detail, Mr. Tarbell, Chris, just speaking again, of these. Small depressed areas act very much like rain gardens, and so the surface is intended to be three inches of mulch. And right below the mulch is a planting soil. That's a mixture of forty percent sand. And you can see the other components there, topsoil and compost.
Mostly in in rain gardens are filled with flowers or. Other things as compared to just depressed areas. I'm trying to get at what are what are people driving down North Ave gonna see? And I'm getting mixed messages that the mulch is only by the trees or the mulch is through the whole depressed area.
The mulch is through the whole depressed area, but if if it pleases the board, we can absolutely plant that mulch area with additional plantings, absolutely.
I think we have to think about what what's going to be seen along North Ave. I mean, it's great. It's great that Bill gets what he wants for his drainage, but at the same time, we've been trying. To create this kind of front entrance and facade of the building kind of being. You know, a unique. Round driveway sitting areas, and now we've put four depressed mulch areas in it. It doesn't seem to be aesthetically pleasing to me. I'm concerned about what it's gonna end up looking like. And then mulch gets tired of, you know. From a month, a month after mulch is done, it gets tired and looks horrible, so.
So we can we can fill in, we can fill in the bottom, let's call it the flat part of the depressed area, Mr. Tarbell. With some additional plantings, I can work with Elliot and 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 select.
Well, I mean, is that the right thing? I mean, we could do. Grasses that get cut quarterly, we could do lots of different things that's still going to give you your drainage capabilities. Right?
Yes, that's correct, because the underlying soil is still going to do what it's going to do, so the surface can be can be, you know, different things. Including.
It could actually be grass. I mean, the 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 sand topsoil mix is fine for growing sand, growing grass.
Sure.
I don't know if that stops, I don't know if the 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 bed of of grass. Stops your infiltration.
It 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 doesn't. If we had designed a very large formal infiltration basin. An infiltration basin is supposed to be planted with turf grass, and so that's perfectly acceptable in something like this. It's really, you know, what you're looking for, you know, at the surfaces, you know. The treatment is happening right below the surface vegetation, and so we have options, and if if something else would be more pleasing to the eye, we can definitely work with you on that.
Yeah, I think you should look at grass or something that's gonna be be green. I'm not a ton of maintenance and. But you know that when the mowing crew comes, they're not just skipping over it because it's mulch and it's gonna. Not get maintained. I I think. A grass of some sort would be appropriate.
I I think if if it's a mowing area like grass, particularly at seasonal change, when all the leaves come down, at least it'll be taken care of, so. Those leaves basically get swept up with a maintenance process. Anything else. You know, like an ivy or something else like that, it's not gonna, it's just the leaves are going to build up over time, so something that can be cleaned fairly easily as well.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about Jim, all the rain gardens that we talked about at the head of the lake. You know, and all the maintenance that we've talked about for those. These are very different, so I think grass is is appropriate here.
Yeah, these are very small, too.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I I don't think your eye would even catch them if they were green.
That's right.
In my humble opinion.
From a maintenance perspective, as you mentioned, the landscapers coming in and taking care of it, yes, it would be much easier if it were grass. I think it'll be consistent with what we have around the the larger area. And I think it'll look clean and neat. These also, they're depressed areas, so they may collect a few leaves and things. As well as trash, so we want to make sure that that's easily taken care of.
If anything, the landscapers will like it because everything will catch in there and they just have to clean up those areas. Yeah, but I I think from an appearance standpoint, green grass would would be appropriate. And then I don't think you'll even realize that it's depressed, you know, people will be just like, oh, okay. Especially where you have the evergreens in front. You know, it's what you, when you see or what you look through will just be a color and not be confused.
Okay.
And do we have, do we have a planting chart on here for sizes and all and types and all that stuff? I just want to make sure that the trees that you swapped out are the same caliber, and they are. Thank you.
All right, so we'll see an updated plan with the notation about irrigation and any updates. To the depressed areas.
All right. That's that's right, Mr. Chair. We'll update the landscaping plan as well as Chris mentioned, he has a minor update to make to the civil plan. Elliot, can you can you go ahead and take that down for now? So, Mr. Chair, as I mentioned before, we also have our traffic engineer, if you have any questions for him about the the traffic aspect of the project. But as I mentioned before, the we we did go to the TAC, and they were they were satisfied with the the traffic situation of the project. In addition to to what we've been discussing tonight, I think we're we're getting to the point where we would like some guidance from the board in terms of what your preferences procedurally for moving forward from here. And starting the process of of writing up the decision, and specifically whether you would like me to work with your MHP consultant on that. Or whether that's something that you'd like to discuss with the the full board in session.
Okay, well, why don't we get to the rest of the information that you you brought forth tonight? And we can talk about next steps, see where things are.
What else? I think that's it from us for tonight, Mr. Chair. That's that's the extent of the updates.
Do, do we have a letter from T A C yet?
We do not.
Not yet. They, they were working on it up till this afternoon, uh, Mr. Tarbell. And I, I, I was hoping it would get in under the wire, but.
Yeah, they only had seventy-three hearings on the twenty-first. So they were catching up on a lot of stuff.
We, we told them that they had, I think, three weeks and they took every second of it. So we should have told them they, they had two.
So Jesse, was there any recommendations coming out of there that you're aware of?
There, there were, uh, Mr. Lucy. They, they had some recommendations about the location of the crosswalk and where it is relative to the building. And we, we've relocated that slightly based on that recommendation. Um, they also have some recommendations in terms of traffic mitigation payments and we'll incorporate that into the final decision. Uh, once we receive those, those final numbers from them.
Thank you.
The packet that I got here says, in addition to the information we've covered, product selection packet dated October sixth.
Yes, that, that's right. Elliot, has that changed since the last time we've, we went through your materials packet?
No, it has not.
Okay.
But is that the materials that are shown on the, that Peter showed at the end of the architectural?
No, it's a, it's a little different, Mr. Chair. There's Elliot's packet of materials is more of the outside material. So the fence, fence details, the enclosure for the trash area, uh, the, the bike storage area, things of that nature. We can go through it if you'd like to take a look at it.
Where is it? Which sheet is it?
It's on Dropbox link.
It's up to, oh, but six basically was issued. It's called proposed product selection image package is the name of it.
But Jim, have we seen windows and siding and all?
Yeah, that's on Peter's stuff.
Okay. And that hasn't changed, right?
That's good. And the stuff that Elliot's got looks fine too.
Okay. I just didn't see it. We had a, we had a a clip of all the new material since our last meeting. And this product selection thing was not there as I can see. So I would.
I think it's just in the link.
Yeah, it came in, it came in on Friday with the rest of the stuff.
Yep. And the other stuff got printed and put in the file. This one didn't. I will take care of that. That's all. I just didn't uh, see it in the handout. Okay. Okay. And that's it. Jesse, for tonight.
That, that is it. The, um, the, the. Uh, yes, the O and M plan that, that was also, uh, filed last week.
Do we want to discuss? Board members?
I mean, I went through it. Jesse's done O and M plans with us before. It's pretty similar. I didn't see any real issues.
Okay. Well, sometimes we do find things and ask, have a few questions or clarification. So.
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't.
Okay. Anyone else? You all good?
The project was listed as the correct project throughout.
We do our best around here.
Sometimes cut and paste gets missed a little bit.
Jesse, is there anything for, any further contact with COMCOM?
No, uh, we've, we've not been in touch with them. Uh, we, one of the items that we were working with, with Bill Renault is the, the issue that we, we've talked about earlier in the hearing of the, the stream. And so we're still working through that so that we're prepared with all the calculations that we'll need for when we do go to COMCOM, but no further contact with them.
Do you have any idea when you'll be, when you'll basically submit to COMCOM? It's like January, February?
Well, we have to approve first.
I, I understand that, but assuming it runs the way it's going, it's a January, February thing I'm thinking.
That's, that's probably right. I think it's, um, we, we'll, we'll be hoping Chris is available to file it, uh, the day after we, uh, we receive a decision from this board. Assuming it goes our way. We got the thumbs up from Chris. So that's a firm commitment.
Take a picture of that, Jesse.
Yeah, I should.
Okay. Anything else, board members? That we haven't already covered? Just going back through my notes as well. Let's see, there's a punch list. Want to make sure we got it all, but I think we did.
The biggest question I have, Mr. Chairman, is that once they do go to COMCOM, if, if COMCOM makes them move the building, doesn't agree to the fifteen, whatever might happen, what is the procedure for coming back to us with whatever changes might have to be made to meet their quo- their standards? I don't re- remember, remember exactly how that works with a forty B.
So I can answer that. Um, so the, the procedure is it's similar to, to what happened over the summer with the Tarrant Lane project. And what would happen if the conservation commission, for example, says move the building or move the whole, the wall farther away from the wetland. We would, we would have to notify this board before making any kind of project changes. And then what the board uh, would be tasked with is to review the changes and determine whether you feel they are substantial or insubstantial. If you feel they're insubstantial, then they're, they're, they can be approved and there's no need for any decision or modification. It's just incorporated into the permit. But if you do feel that they're substantial, then there's a need to open a new public hearing to discuss the new changes. So anything that changes will be reviewed by this board.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yep. And it would be a condition anyway, that any future changes, and again, whether they came from, yeah, once they start developing perhaps, right? They typically, these projects come back because things change in the field as we all know. So it would be general conditions that would cover those kinds of things too. And conditions that are situations that could come up with CONCOM, I suppose, similar. Um, or so obviously the key next steps that pretty obvious, we gotta draft some conditions, um, because there's gonna be a lengthy list with whatever waivers and so forth as we've done on other projects. So maybe start to draft those. They, again, if the town is, you discussed with the town engineer about, um, you know, gifts to the town, so to speak, uh, to cover some things. Um, you know, then those kinds of things being incorporated, we might need town council, Mr. Mullin to weigh in. Just again, the language we've done that. Uh, we did it at two hundred Quanapawat. I think we've done it in others, just to make sure the language is proper, um, for some of those things. But just start drafting conditions and a decision. And I think we can work offline on that, but I, board members, I would be inclined to bring it back here. Um, so that folks can at least have a look at it, get it sent ahead of a meeting and, and have a look and, and just get any sort of big, big things covered in the public hearing.
But Dave, isn't this what Ezra has also used for to make sure he's involved in pulling this off?
He can be. Absolutely.
I would absolutely use him. I mean, he's, he's the expert. I, I just get confused about what's a way, you know, we don't do, it's not the waiver versus the binding, you know, you guys are better at it than I, but we have Ezra and he's a expert. Let's use him.
Yeah, no, I don't see him tonight. And I think, you know, where we stopped the subcommittee meetings, right? He might have temporarily stepped away, but I think we could reengage to, uh, to work on the decision itself. So we can still do that.
I, I definitely agree. I think Ezra is a great resource. So, uh, I can connect with him, uh, and, and you, Mr. Chair, uh, offline tomorrow to get the process started of, of working with him. And in terms of, of engaging town council, my understanding is that Tom's policy is that he doesn't answer questions from applicants. So we may need a bit of an introduction, even though Tom and I know each other and we work, we work together a lot. He, he probably would need an introduction from you, Mr. Chair, just to let him know that we're going to be, uh, asking him the question of how, how do we properly word the conditions, particularly with respect to the items, you know, dealing with the public way and maintenance and, and responsibility for, for maintaining them, things of that nature.
So again, we draft him and then I can, I can help initiate that as well. We've, we've just got through doing several meetings with, um, Mr. Mullin and, and, um, on two hundred Quanapawat, uh, same thing. We just, they were drafted. He was sent a copy. And then we had a couple of, um, Zoom meetings with him just to walk through his feedback and discuss things. Um, so can work that way again.
Very good. Well, we'll, we will commit to, uh, to moving full steam ahead as, and, and accomplish as much as we can before the board's next meeting. And, and hopefully by, uh, by the time we're in early December, we'll have, uh, a draft decision for you as well as all the updated materials. Uh, and knock on wood, the, uh, T A C letter and, and Mr., um, Reno's final sign-off letter, um, and, and in which case we may be in a position to close at the next hearing.
Sounds good. Anything else, board members?
Oh.
Okay. So with that, we'll once again open it up to public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question about the information they've heard tonight, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening.
Mr. Chairman, can you remind me of what the date for our December meeting is?
The fourteenth.
Thank you. That was pretty quick. I move that we continue this to December fourteenth.
Second.
Any discussion?
To extend. Again, I just don't remember how long the.
I think we're, I think we're good to the end of the year, Richard. Let's, uh, just double check.
You're looking for the, the extension date, the, the last extension? I think it was to the fourteenth. So if, if, if we want a little more breathing room, we're happy to send in a letter pushing that out, or, um, we can, we can play it by ear or see if it wraps up on the fourteenth. And if not, we're, we're certainly willing to work with the board to, to send another letter.
I think we should extend it beyond the fourteenth, given that there could be a snowstorm, some sort of weird thing. And then I think we should go beyond our next meeting after the fourteenth.
Understood. I'll submit the letter to that effect after, after the hearing, Mr. Tarbell.
The meeting, the meeting after that is January eleventh.
January eleventh. Okay.
So sometime after that.
Okay, understood. I will, I will send that.
I mean, that's my opinion. Dave might have.
No, no, I agree. That gives us cover in case there's a problem with the December meeting. Um, we may not need that, but it's good to have the extension. Um, Jesse, if you want to propose a date, we can, uh, take a motion on that. Um, what are you comfortable with? Do you wanna?
Uh, let's, do we say we're, we're looking at January, the eleventh? Could we say the thirteenth? The thirteenth?
Sure.
Anyway?
Sure.
That, that gives us room for.
The applicants offered to accept, extend to January thirteenth.
I'll second that too.
Okay. So we have a continue of the hearing to December fourteenth and an extension of the public hearing, um, for us to, uh, continue the public hearing until January thirteenth. Um, and it's been seconded any discussion. All right, regular voting members. Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Uh, well, and somebody's in timeout. So, uh, Greg?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Um, actually, I think if I'm not mistaken, Greg, you're on this one, actually. It's Jim, Chip, Tom and Greg. Yeah. So, um, yeah, cause Michael, yeah, you've missed two. So yeah, those are the five voting members of record on this one. Um, okay. Well, thanks for the update today, Jesse and team. Um, appreciate it. And, um, we'll look forward to getting, getting the, those next steps going.
Thank you. I will see you in December. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you, Jesse. It, I missed, uh, the beginning of the meeting, obviously, but did you formally announce that we have a new full-time member?
You know, no, I didn't.
He was always full-time.
He's prime. New, uh, what's the right permanent, uh?
Well, with, with the departure of, uh, with Amy's departure, um, recently, uh, they did advertise to fill her seat of a full voting member. And, uh, Tom was appointed, uh, on Monday at the town council meeting to that seat. So, and I understand you've been sworn in today, Tom?
I did. I was at the clerk's office.
Awesome. So it's official. So obviously the next step is they're now going to advertise for, for the alternate seat. Um, and, um, there was an additional person. Yes, somebody else may reapply, uh, that applied for this seat and we could get others, who knows? So we'll see. I'll let you know, um, when they advertise and anything comes our way. Um.
Whatever happened to the, uh, council's enhanced super vetting, uh, process that they're gonna do?
I don't know.
Let's not ask. Let's, let it lie.
No, no, there's a stack of Wakefield item papers. That was a big topic for like three months, I don't know.
Oh yeah. And then we had one round of interviews at one point because Tom, uh, Dave was away and I interviewed.
Yeah.
For some, something and then that has gone away.
Classic, don't ask, just be thankful.
Don't, don't ask.
Don't ask, don't tell.
All right, moving right along. Next continued hearing. Twenty-three dash five, six, seven and eight, one ninety-eight Albion Street Real Estate LLC at one ninety-eight Albion Street. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for the record, uh, attorney Brian McGrail, uh, for the, uh, applicant. It will be one second. Uh, President will be tonight's meeting for one ninety-eight Albion, uh, Street, uh, Real Estate LLC is John Over from Hayes Engineering and also Steve DeFurrier is here. Uh, Giancarlo Taberry is here. He is the principal of the entity. Um, I'm gonna try to be efficient. I'm not gonna recap because that I'm sure the board, um, recalls this project, uh, as we've gone through the process, uh, but as requested, uh, from the last hearing, we've submitted a landscape plan that was done by Jim Emanuel. Um, and that addressed, uh, all landscaping aspects of the project. And in particular, the, the blank wall, if you will, where you, the board wanted some trees and we mentioned that to Jim and he addressed it. Um, we've submitted a final site plan. I have an updated one, uh, that I need to, uh, submit tonight. Uh, uh, we had an issue on the table that, uh, it was referenced as a mid-rise, uh, apartment when this building is not. It's a garden part apartment. So John has fixed and corrected that. Uh, we submitted the final architectural plans, which have not changed. And I should say nothing's changed on the site plan except for that table. Um, we submitted an O and M plan, uh, draft conditions. I sent you a copy of the T A C memo, just in case you didn't have it. We talked about that at the last meeting, but just for the record, um, you have gotten a, uh, today, uh, D P W, uh, sign-off that I've gone back and forth with the town engineer on our conditions. Uh, and he is satisfied. Um, and that's where we are. So I think really the only um, new items to go over i- if you'd like is, um, is to, I guess, just for the record, uh, I guess I'd like to just bring up the, um, revised site plan and just show you that. And I'll send you an email copy of that. And obviously we'll get your hard copy of that, Mr. Chair, uh, if I can.
And then can we also just run through the conditions, Brian, quickly?
Yep. So this is, uh, this is the site plan. We put a new date on it. Today's date um, is a final revision. I think John did that. Yep, you can see it. And it says zoning in parking table or, or corrected for this project because, uh, it was listed here as a mid-rise apartment, which is very similar. There's a few differences in height and stuff. So it's good. We saw it because the height in a mid-rise is a lot of fifty and garden is thirty-five. So that's one of the things that we need to leave on this project. But it because it's a, the difference is in the bylaw, if it's a three-story or less, it's classified as a garden apartment. If it's over three stories is classified as a mid-rise. So that has been corrected and I just wanted that for the record. That is now the site plan of record. Um.
What's the date of it, Brian?
Eleven sixteen. And then, uh.
Why don't I have that?
Oh, you don't have it because it just, it hasn't been sent to you yet.
Right. I have the eleven three version. Okay.
That's right. And that's what I just told you. I got corrected today and I'm going to send you a copy of that momentarily.
All right. Multitasking. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, and then this is the landscape plan. If you want to see this quickly, um, or not quickly, whatever you want. But this was done, I think, as usual, Jim just did a tremendous job on this. He went out to the site, spent some time out there, worked with John, worked with, um, Giancarlo, uh, and just really um, really lit the site up with landscaping, um, all the way around, even in the back perimeter. And then this, to refresh the board's memory, this was kind of the blank wall, if you will, that you wanted us to try to get some trees in here. So he was able to get three trees in here on this side, which you would have requested. But I think this is really gonna finish the frosting on the cake on this project.
Can you blow up the plant schedule, please, Brian?
Yes, I can.
And what's the date of this plan?
And what's the date of this plan? This plan is dated June seven, two thousand twenty-two, revision date eight thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Okay, that was those are the last changes. Okay. Right. Hold on, Chip. Is that, is that okay, Chip?
Yeah, I just wanted to see the, the type of plant that was going in along the side of the building.
Oh, you wanna know the uh, number of it? Hold on. Whoops.
Sweet gum is what I remember it being.
It's a silhouette sweet gum. Yep.
Oh, look at that.
Brian, this might not be a big deal, but how come the revision date is August when you just added those trees and like this week?
Yeah, I don't know why I did that. I think, I think, to be honest with you, he, he worked on this plan pretty quickly. I bet you just had that date from another project or something, to be honest with you.
All right.
Because i- the date makes no sense, Joe, because we retained him well after that. So. But I mean, I think the important thing is it has a date reference to the decision, so you know what plan it is.
Yep.
But point well taken, the, the date doesn't make sense.
That's all.
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Uh, in this package, or any, anywhere else for that matter, it, there's no um, indication as to what the bike stands are. I know where they are, but what, you know, we have no detail or product for those locations. And the other, the other one is there's a fence running around this property against the butters, and what is the fence? We don't have any details for that either.
John, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Could you address uh, maybe both of those?
Um, yeah, I mean, a- as far as the actual stands, um, basically worked out the location and, and the size of them. I don't have, you know, an actual product. Uh, and as far as the, similar with the fence, um, James and I talked about putting a fence along that backside. Uh, I, I didn't realize that he didn't specify what type of fence it was.
Is that back here, John?
Yes, there, and it goes around the um, the, the, I think it's a two-family, multi-family uh, budding property to the.
Back here?
No, the other way.
Oh, here?
Goes down, yeah, and then keep following, yeah, up to there, and then out to Lake Street.
Yeah, so uh, Giancarlo, do you have any thoughts on what type of fence you wanna do there?
Uh, uh, I guess whatever would be uh, you know, if there's a certain type that would be, you know, amenable to the board, or if there's something that's usually used, obviously tasteful nonetheless.
I think what Giancarlo's saying, whatever the board wants. So, um.
Five-foot hand-laid stone. I heard whatever we wanted, didn't it?
Within reason.
Yeah, I, I'm really getting tired of white vinyl, but I, so Giancarlo, I think this property could maybe use something different than white vinyl. Um, reliable fence actually just installed for me a vertical, a horizontal uh, with eight-inch, you know, six-foot-high horizontal cedar fence um, that looks very contemporary and might go really nicely, you know, stained up might go really nicely with the wood and the different things you're doing with the building. I just don't think a white vinyl fence fits with what you're doing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, you've got a lot of nice wood going into the space. You, you've done some nice walls. Then to stick a white vinyl, it, it, and honestly, I, I think it cheapens what you've done.
Mm-hmm.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I, I've, I've used um, Reliable a few times. Actually, did my house in a few projects as well, so, yeah, I um, I can definitely talk to them, obviously. Another thing is obviously just maintenance is upkeep us, you know, for the fence, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, but if you get a good stain on it, yeah, you have to do, you have to stain it up every five years or so, but or just let it go natural gray.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I think you, I think we can do better than white vinyl uh, without, you know, because even a, you know, a good-grade white vinyl now is almost as expensive as a wood fence.
Yeah, yeah. Not necessarily something I could, you know, talk to the, you know, whatever funds company it may be at that point or whatnot, but obviously to make it look nice, you know, not, not to um, take away from the building to add to it, you know, and complement the landscaping, you know?
How about if the board just retains jurisdiction that will bring back what we want to do for fencing for review?
That's fine. That, I think that would be great.
Yeah, that way we don't have to rush a decision. Giancarlo can search it, and we can bring it back before we install a few to approve.
Absolutely.
I'm okay with that.
Anything else on the landscaping plan?
Nope. There is a note that every, all beds are irrigated right somewhere in all of this.
Right, ready, Chip?
Right down the bottom. I know I had seen it. I just couldn't.
Yep. Okay, you wanna see the conditions?
Please, we'll just, we'll see if there's anything we need to.
Yeah, before we go there, just, I'm checking my notes, and again, Brian, sorry if you already covered it. Um, the lighting comeback, so those now up in the four pole lights, did we cover that already? Yeah, it's a, and a photometrics plan. Do we have the updated photometrics plan? I think um, is that on your plan? Should I go there?
It's on the plans.
On the plans, yeah. It is in the. Wanna see it, Dave?
It's the last, it's the last page in the civil drawings.
It's eleven-three. Okay, and that's reflective of those. Okay. Hold on.
And that, that plan doesn't change from what was um, presented to the, the board, you know, the previous meeting.
Yeah. Okay, I just had it in there as a comeback. Maybe we discussed it, but we needed the, the plan for our file or something, so. It has the poles. Yeah, okay, they're, they're located. Yep.
And they match what Peter's got on his drawings as well.
Okay, that was it. I just checking my notes from the last meeting. So draft conditions and O and M, I think we're next, right?
I don't wanna confuse anything, but on the landscaping plan, he does, uh, James does call out an opaque composite fence in the back there. But I, I, from what it sounds like, that's, you might wanna do something different.
Yeah, so we'll just put a condition that if the board retains jurisdiction, we'll prove the final fence.
Prior to estimation.
Yep. All right, back to you, Brian. Okay. So I made a few revisions on the uh, on the decision, on the conditions uh, based on final discussions with uh, Bill Renault. Um, so you can see these?
Yep.
These are all pretty standard. We've got, do you wanna go through them, or you?
No, just any that, that are.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanna.
So I had a, I had to fix this because it, it had the wrong unit mix. So multifamily uh, is ten, it's not seven on this project, got mixed up with Water Street. Uh, and this project has, uh, Peter, correct me here, or Steve, it's two, two bedrooms and eight one bedrooms?
Yeah, correct, Brian.
Yeah, and um, what we're proposing here, just to be upfront with the board, to have a discussion on this, I, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure the board's aware of what we're proposing. We're proposing that two of the one bedrooms would be affordable units. Uh, none of the two bedrooms, just because of the proportions here uh, on the project. The density on this project uh, is up to twenty, he's at ten, and we'd rather not lose one of those two bedroom units. So we have eight one-bedroom units. We'd like the two affordables to be one bedrooms. That's our request. Does that meet the state? Yeah. Requirements? Yeah, they wouldn't have a problem. If they do, they'll, they'll bounce it back, Dave, so. No, yeah, just, I didn't know if the requirement was to have.
And, and what's the reason you don't wanna do one and one?
Just because of the, of the, of, of the value of the project, to be honest, Chip, to, to lose uh, you know, a two-bedroom, because it's not fifty-fifty.
But how many, you got seven two-bedrooms, right?
We got, no, no, we got uh, two two-bedrooms. Eight one-bedrooms. Ten units altogether. Two, two bedrooms and eight one-bedroom units.
I would be okay with, since there's so few twos to.
Well, that's why I, that's why I'm requesting it for your consideration.
Yeah, I probably would have requested it at the beginning of the project instead of the last minute, but.
Didn't really think about it, to be honest with you.
Okay, that's honest. I'm okay with what others are.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't wanna just put it in there. I wanted to point it out, so. Um, and then uh, so this is the requirement for the TAC requested the contribution of twelve thousand five hundred. That's in here. Um, the INI fee, uh, speaking with the town engineer today, there is no INI fee for this project because it's actually a net benefit from what was there before with the laundromat, and that's the way they do their calculations. So that's taken out. And these are the two final conditions that were required by the town engineer today. That's it.
So Mister Chair, if we, if you go, if we go forward, I'd like to just call these the conditions that we've agreed upon and been presented and reviewed tonight.
Okay. Brian, you'll get an updated copy with these revisions, so we'll have it in our files as well. Yeah, and then also we need to add the uh, condition, I was gonna make a note on it for the uh, fence approval. Or if you get to do, or if you get to do that.
Okay. And signage is somewhere on here? That we retained? Signage for the commercial, it's right there. Go back.
Yeah.
Twelve or thirteen, fourteen?
Yeah.
Has not been approved by the board, and the board retains jurisdiction. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we know where it's gonna go and stuff, but you haven't seen the final.
Right. We don't know who's going in.
That's right.
And Brian, just gotta add one in there about the fence.
I, yeah, I put a note at the bottom, Tom. See it, just.
Okay.
Right here. I'll, I'll, I'll wordsmith that with the chair for the decision.
Yep.
Okay.
So Brian, two more questions I have. Um, is there any lighting on the roof deck?
Uh, Steve or John?
Uh, it hasn't been talked about, but we figure there would probably be some ambient lighting up there for guests at nighttime. Um, assuming it would probably be at the roof deck level, not the, the building level. Um, so nothing on the elevator or that staircase applied on the wall.
Well, I think there's gonna be something on the staircase because it has to have an exit sign from that level. And I don't know about the elevator, but certainly the staircase, and there may be other directional signage up there as well. And then what's the, this is surrounded by a, a wall?
Yeah, yeah, so it's a forty-two-inch parapet wall that wraps all the way around. Um, so that, that parapet wall is acting as the railing.
And that, so there's two, there's two walls then. There's the outer wall of the building, and then some sort of wall around the, the roof deck.
Yeah, so it'll probably be some sort of screening product, um, and we could do some research on what the product will be, but just to separate the mechanicals from where the tenants of the building will be.
So Brian, I would suggest that be added to other fences, basically. We see that as well.
Would that be, Jim, the lighting?
The lighting on the roof and the fencing around the deck area. Pete has provided details, basically, at our wall, but we don't have anything on what this is, and I assume the deck itself is gonna be some sort of decking on top of the roofing.
Got it.
Not that we're gonna see it, but we might see the wall.
I just added it. Then I, I submitted the O and M plan, and that's pretty, pretty uh, that's been pretty well vetted by the board, and uh, as Mister Topell said, I made sure the names were consistent and I go through it, but you probably won't be able to stay awake. And we incorporated John uh, Over in Hayes Engineering's uh, O and M uh, for the drainage into that O and M plant. Okay, board members, any questions on them? And I don't think we have to go through them in detail unless folks have questions.
Brian, real quick, um, do we talk about construction, what, you know, cuz there's a, the St. Joe's is across the street, right? So is there a timeline on that, like, the deliveries and everything?
They're not really across, they're down the road quite a bit, aren't they?
St. Joe's is across.
But you got seven-eleven right across the street.
Yeah, it's around the corner.
Joe's down around the corner.
I mean, I thought it was a pretty small project, Joe, compared.
Yeah, I, I was, we talked about it on the project, so I just.
Yeah, no, I mean, you also have people walking to the Galvin, but I think the deliveries will probably be.
Side roads.
Yeah.
Off the side there, all right.
Yeah, I thought with you, I thought about it, but I didn't think it was was small enough that I don't think there's big enough deliveries being made to be crazy.
Okay.
I think, could be wrong.
We'll find out.
Okay, anything else, board members? Okay, once again, we'll close it to public, um, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony. All right, so next steps punch list, Brian, um. Need the TAC letter. Oh, we did have the TAC letter.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Just an updated site plan? I think you, yeah, I can, I just brought it up, and I can email it to you. Nothing's changed for that table. Right, no, just to get a copy for the record. We all have it. Um, okay. And that should be the final one.
Yep, here it comes right now.
Thank you. So board members, um.
I said, I think we're ready to vote, Mister Chairman.
Well, that's, I was just, that's, thank you for getting the words out of my mouth.
At board members, so I jumped in.
Yeah, do we need to continue this, or, or are we ready to proceed? Yeah, I mean, we've got a a couple, you know, open items, just finalizing the, the draft conditions, getting the final site plan, but we're pretty much there, so. If you've got the, if you're prepared, board members, go ahead, anyone?
I'm ready.
Someone have a comment, or are they just, I'm speaking over them?
All right, given that, here we go. So Mister Chairman, I would suggest that we use the conditions that we went over tonight with the changes uh, that we discussed as the conditions. I think the final site plan by Hanes and Aaron revised November sixteen, twenty twenty-two is the final site plan. And then the final architectural plans by Phoenix Architects are dated November eleventh uh, twenty twenty-two. Um, so I move that we grant a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-two and one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws, allowing a ten-unit garden apartment in combination with a retail store or service establishment or restaurant use, as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. And I move that we grant this for the following reasons, the final. And I move that we grant this for the following reasons, the findings, uh, A, the use request is, is. Listed in the table of use regulations as requiring a special permit in the district. For the application is made, the requested use is essential. And desirable to the public convenience or, and welfare. There is a dire need for housing, including affordable housing to the town of Wakefield and the surrounding areas. See, the requested use will not create or add to, to undo congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. As we saw noted in our T A C letter. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewage system. Or any other municipal system for such as an extent. That the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area. Or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health. Safety or the general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district. As it actually will increase it and make it nicer. Or of the adjoining districts, nor be determined to public health, or, or be detrimental. To the public health and convenience or welfare. The requested use will not by its addition to a neighborhood. Cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of some neighborhood. This use will put a vacated and blighted property to a beneficial use. And add to the affordable housing inventory. The proposed use will not detriment, will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. And it will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district. Are not nauseous to the residential use. We have also, uh, reviewed section one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws. Which are the pertinent parts states that are reviewing a site plan, the special per- permit granting authority. And other applicable agents have considered among other things the following. One. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties or improvements. Thus, back to the T A C and their recommendations. Adequacy of the methods and disposal for sewage, refuse and other wastes. And the methods for surface and stormwater drainage. Thus, all the discussions and work with the town engineering department. And provisions for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. Incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related use on the lot and tract. So we've considered all of these things. And, uh, reference to the criteria, and we are satisfied. That we should grant a special permit. And the.
Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
Are already presented.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a point before the board votes, um, I would like to, uh, request that the board. Accept an extension on the time to file a decision on this until the end of January. And I can explain why currently we're extended until the end of December. I think that's gonna be fine, um, but. Um, with the holidays coming, um, you know, Mr. Chair and Gail knows that it's kind of on us to get them filed and. I don't know what Gail's vacation time is coming up and. And I, I just don't wanna be in a situation that they're done on, you know, right around Christmas or just before, and we don't have, you know. It puts people in a tough predicament to get them clocked in. So I think they could probably be done in the next four or five weeks, but I just don't want, that's gonna be pushing up against Christmas. So even, even till the mid-January will be fine, but I think it will be beneficial for all of us to do that for all of these before we vote, to accept that extension.
Okay, so the, the request, uh, is for what, maybe January thirteenth?
Yeah, that's fine, just take, just think, and I think it'll be done before the end of the year, but just in case, I, I run into this before as you have, when you start getting near the end of the year.
I understand.
And, uh, vacation time comes in and holidays, I just don't want that pressure on people's backs to have to, you know, deal with something. So, yeah, January thirteenth will be fine.
I don't have to remake that first. Special permit. Why have we, if we vote on this now?
No.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a procedure.
Given that, I would move procedurally that we accept the continuation. And extension of the date to Janu-, what did you just say, January thirteenth?
Yes. As requested by the petitioner, yeah.
Asked by the petitioner.
Alright, second on that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? I have regular voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so procedurally we're covered. We have hopefully enough time to, to get this thing filed.
I think there's plenty of time, but just to be safe.
Sure. Alright, so back to your original motion chip, um, you made your findings based on the conditions, so that motion was complete for the initial special permit.
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion on that motion? Alright, same voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, that's unanimous.
Brian? I know you made the correction somewhere, multifamily versus. Versus garden. What are we calling this, the multifamily or the garden?
Well, it's multi, it's a multifamily garden apartment. That's what it is.
But do we need to list that? If I just call it a multifamily project, is that?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
So, we need another special permit, so I move that we, uh, allow. Grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-two dash one. The Wakefield zoning bylaws allowing reductions and or alterations to this. Dimensional requirements under section one ninety dash thirty-two D. And table two of the bylaw related to a ten-unit. Garden apartment in combination with a restaurant use as shown on the final site plan. And final architectural plans, including but not limited to the following. And that's restaurant. Services that, there's four things that it could be on the first. Um, so, A, allowing a reduction in the required lot area on the final site plan. B, allowing a reduction in the required lot frontage and lot width as shown on the final site plan. C, allowing a reduction in the required front side and rear setbacks to be that as shown on the final site plan. Allowing a maximum height of forty-one feet and as shown on the final site plan. E, allowing open area of twenty-eight point three percent as shown on the final site plan. F, any other reductions and or alterations from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-two D and table two. Of the Wakefield zoning by law to allow the project to be constructed. As shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. Same findings as the last special permit. And same conditions as the last special permit. And furthermore, that these reductions and or alterations will enhance. The garden apartment project as a whole and allow it to benefit the neighborhood in which it is situated. That is my motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion? Alright, same voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that two is unanimous.
Uh, thirdly, uh, another special permit pursuant to section one ninety that I moved that we grant. Special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-six C. Of the Wakefield zoning by law, reducing the requirements of the standards. For off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw. As follows, A, section one ninety dash thirty-seven C of the bylaw. Allowing two of the parking spaces to be nine by sixteen and a half feet. In length as shown on the final site plan. B, section one ninety dash thirty-seven D of the bylaw, allowing four of the parking spaces. To be tandem resulting two of the parking spaces. Not having direct access to an aisle or driveway as shown on the final site, site plan, C. Section one ninety dash thirty-seven E one of the bylaw, allowing the landscape strip as shown on the final site plan. And D, any other necessary reductions in requirements and or standards, uh, for off-street parking and loading. Under article seven of the bylaw related to the project as shown on the final site plan. And final architectural plan, as long as there is no reduction in number of parking spaces. We find. That the application of the standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven proves to be infeasible and the reductions are. Supported by evidence of infeasi- infeasibility due to lack of suitable land. Design consideration and other similar factors. The granting of such special permit would not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character. Or welfare of the neighborhood or district or of the town. And furthermore, we, the board, determine that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in such a way. As to hinder the safe entry and or exit of any vehicle from any driveway to the street. Or restrict visibility at a corner of two streets. We are, and the conditions as already presented. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, same voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that two is unanimous.
Okay. Almost right, just give, the next one's a variance.
Yes.
I lost my notes. Okay, I move that we could grant a variance from the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading. Under article seven of the Wakefield zoning bylaws follows. A, section one ninety dash thirty-seven C of the bylaw, allowing two of the parking spaces. To be. Nine by sixteen and a half feet. Long as shown on the final site plan. B, section one ninety dash thirty-seven D of the bylaw. Allowing four of the parking spaces to be tandem resulting in two of the parking spaces. Not having direct access to an aisle or driveway as shown on the final site plan. And C, any other necessary reductions in their requirements and or standards. For our street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw related to the project as shown. On the final site plan and final architectural plans. So. On the findings, we, the circumstances affecting the land or structures that we, the applicant has agreed. To reduce existing curb cuts that will be a benefit to the neighborhood. The proper way. The property currently houses a laundromat. The existing building will be raised and the project will result in environmental remediation that will be a benefit to the property and the neighborhood as a whole. The situation provides a unique circumstance relating to the land and structures. The hardship, the board finds that the application of the standards of off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw. To be infeasible and reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility. Due to access and aggression limitations and design considerations. The board also finds that the requested relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. And all the conditions as pre- as already presented go along with this variance.
I'll second that. Thank you, any discussion on that motion? Same voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes. So that is unanimous. All approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, board members. Appreciate, appreciate the process, thank you.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
We got, we got the CEO's permission to go bye-bye too.
Yeah, yeah, they're all here, yeah, that was.
CFO, CEO.
They, they're doing the devil in the landscaping, so I'll put them, have, put the fence into.
Clerk of the works.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next continued hearing, twenty-three dash fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, Kingman Block LLC. At three sixty-nine to three seventy-one Main Street. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, once again, I'm trying to Brian McGrath representing the, uh. Uh, entity Kingman Block LLC, which is the applicant on this project. Uh, with me tonight is, uh, Dan Martinez from KDI Architects. Uh, and, uh, Mr. T-Ball could not make it tonight, so it's really just Dan and I. Um, what, um, has transpired over the past four to five weeks. Um, we were sent back to the drawing board, uh, by, um, uh, yard board, uh, as far as massing on the project and. Uh, the things that we were told to focus on was the fourth story of the, of the building. And how we could trim that down, how we might be able to utilize. Some of the inside of the bank building to, to, as units to get rid of the fourth story or to shrink it down. And part of that assignment was, um, Mr. Lucy had wanted us to look at the massing as it affects Albion Street on the project. In doing so, so, um, Mr. McBane was a designated board member to work with us. And thank you, Jim. Um, uh, Jim actually did a massing model on his own, um, surprise, surprise, on the, uh. Effects on Albion Street as requested by Mr. Lucy, so he saved us some work in that regard and, and shared it with us. Um, we initially proposed a, um, uh, reducing the fourth story. And stepping it back as has happened with some other projects. And stepping it back significantly from Chestnut Street, but not as much, uh, from Albion, just because it won't work geometrically to. To go the other way, uh, with the layout of the building inside, and we presented that to Jim when we went over it. I thought, we all thought it looked pretty good, but. Um, Jim did not think it was acceptable from a massing perspective on Albion Street, that what Mr. Lucy had suspected on the impact on the buildings over there. Would not work with, with any fourth story on the building. Um, and so Jim conveyed that thought to us after showing the massing model, we, we actually hired a company to go in and measure. The second floor of the bank building to see how we can incorporate residential units in there and, um. We work with Jim on a working session on that to try to get those units from the first four, fourth floor. Into the second floor of the, uh, bank building. And I'm happy to report that we were, we were able to do that. So now what, what you're gonna see is a revised project that has totally eliminated the fourth story in this building, which I think was kind of a goal of the board from the beginning. Um, and has taken that space that we didn't know what to do with on the inside of the bank building. Uh, and put it to a real good use, uh, put that fourth floor residential unit, uh, mix into that area. So, um, that's, that's kind of how we got to what you're going to see, and, uh, Dan, can you share and go through it? Is that okay?
Yes, of course, uh, thank you, Brian, uh, let me share my screen. Uh, can everyone see?
It's coming up.
There you go. Perfect. Uh, okay, so, good evening, everyone, good to see you again. Um, so I'm going to walk through kind of the past design that we submitted. And the most recent design, which is the one that you're seeing on the board. Uh, uh, sorry, on the screen. As Brian mentioned, uh, some of the main concerns were that the building massing, uh, was too high in relation to the. Buildings located on Albion Street, which are two stories, two and a half. And also the undefined use for the existing building at the bank. So. I shall begin, uh, first I'll begin with the rendering, just to kind of show you guys what the visual impact would be without the additional floor. Uh, so this is what we're currently working with. Uh, here are some elevations and I'll get into the, the design. Of the bridge in a little bit, um. And here is kind of a massing, uh, uh, Google Earth, uh, Photoshop version of this. And just for comparison, I want to show the past design as well. Just so you can see, uh, you know, how. Removing that fourth floor really does, uh, contextualize the building much better with what's going on in the immediate surroundings. Uh, this is what we had before. And these were also previous elevations. Um. So. Basically, uh. one of the main things we did was utilize, uh, take off the fourth floor completely and, and basically utilize, uh, the third floor on the bank. Um, we are using a connector here, and that's to keep the building accessible and to have the elevator basically serve as both buildings. Um, one thing that we did do was, uh, before it was all two bedroom units. Uh, so we actually introduced some one-bedroom units, uh, so the, the unit count is still the same. We're still at twenty units. And now we have, uh, four units that are, uh, one bedroom, and we have the, the other sixteen units are twenty, uh, sorry, the other sixteen units are two bedrooms. Um, but basically, uh, what, what we basically did for this, uh, for this time around was, uh, really just work with the massing, uh, to bring something that the board would be more in agreeance with. Uh, we didn't change the design, uh, we heard some positive comments from the board, uh, and the way that the, the sign was going, the direction of the sign, uh, so we kept it. Um. And in case you guys wanted to see the plans again, uh, here's our parking layout. Uh, our second floor, we introduce a new unit here. Um, and for the third floor in bank, we, we define the use for that as well. Um, so this is pretty much what I had to present to you guys today. Uh, you know, we haven't really changed much besides that. Um, so I would like to conclude my presentation with that.
Yeah, I'm sure the board might want to hear from Jim on, um, his thoughts, and, um, and the other thing that we're, we're, we're going to be able to do, I think, with this is, is a second, this kind of a mezzanine area on the second story, second floor of the bank, which is gonna be, um, I think it's gonna be able to be incorporated into the restaurant, is like an upper eating area, which will really be nice because it will look down upon the, the rest, and that was Jim's idea, so. Um, so thank you, Jim. A lot of good input as usual, and I think, uh, driving us in a positive direction.
So, um, after our last formal meeting, basically, um, like took on a task of looking, um, at what could happen on us, on the third floor of this bank building and, um, realized that there is quite a bit of space, and as we all know, trying to get that utilized as office space is ridiculous because we all know what office space, uh, will never fly downtown anymore. And so I sort of figured out how many spaces they might have there. It turns out that the, the architect was at the same time sort of considering this as well. I looked at it more as a separate building. They looked at it as a connecting building, which clearly you understand because you have one elevator, you don't have to add in a staircase, and it doesn't disrupt what's already there on the lower floors for any sort of restaurant. Um, when they came back with, um, the fourth floor being pulled back from, from the str- from the main street, I had stu- I had already studied basically what the back of the building would look like, and they hadn't pulled it back as much. And it was a four-story, overhanging, two stories on Albion Street. Didn't work out. Showed them that basically as to the impact, and then we got into discussion about how we might subdivide um, the third floor of the bank. And I had a little bit different rendition on it. They have come up with this, basically, and all of this basically gets rid of that fourth floor, which was really where we wanted to go to begin with, plus eliminate the issue with, uh, office space on this building. So now the only tenant they've got to find basically is someone to take up that first floor restaurant or whatever, basically. So, to my mind, basically, this is a a, a real move forward. The design of the building, the, um, new building basic, I think, is acceptable. I think we have to discuss colors and, you know, details and stuff like that, but at this point, the, the plan is pretty much solved in, uh, what they're proposing here as far as the count and the like. So, I think it's up to you guys, the board, basically, sort of to weigh in as to what you all think. But I'm satisfied where this has gone at the moment.
Where are we with the parking? Are we still one shy, two shy?
Yeah, so where we are with the parking is, Joe, I was gonna bring that up. So before we had twenty units at two bedrooms, now we got sixteen at two and four at one. We're too shy on parking. We're asking for the board to consider that. I think we can manage it, you know, an M plan as we did on Crescent Street to, you know, potentially limit, limit vehicles. Um, the, uh, um, I think, you know, your board, as you know, has discretion to reduce parking, which I, I think you're always hesitant to do on residential buildings. Um, and I respect that, but, um, it is in the bylaw, and this is within the seven hundred fifty feet of the railroad, um, sorry, the twenty-five hundred feet of the railroad station, which allows for extra density. But, you know, when you get that extra density, it makes it tougher to be parking. And I think, you know, you're probably gonna see similar circumstances in the immediate downtown area, uh, as projects come, come forth. I know the police building will be moving forward at some point. That's gonna have some challenges with parking, so, um, I think in the downtown area, so close to the train station, being able to work this through with an O and M plan, um, I would request your consideration to, um, in the fact that the applicant's been extremely cooperative on this, um, and, um, um, has reduced the, the only way to get those units into the bank building was to go to four one bedroom units. And, and that does have a, a positive impact on the, on the parking effect, so.
You, you had no one-bedroom units before it?
Correct.
Right, yeah, so. By just, by just doing that, you've eliminated probably a couple.
One of the counts, you said you're minus two, but what is it actually? Um, so, let me see, Rick's not here, but, uh, so we have we will require thirty and we have twenty-eight.
Checking the latest plan, I thought I'd seen it.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, I feel better about it just because you added the one bedroom, so. We got rid of a couple two bedrooms, so that, that, I would assume that eliminates one or two cars. Even though you don't, I mean, the mathematically doesn't work, but.
I love the idea of putting more, um, apartments right on the street or condos or whatever you're gonna make them. Um, just to kind of enliven it with lighting and more of a residential feel.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Mike. I saw this plan when it was evolving, and those units in the bank building that have windows on to Main Street are gonna be phenomenal units.
Unbelievable, yeah. And what's the ceiling height up there?
Uh, Dan, do you know on that?
Uh, I would have to take up the existing plans from the bank. Um, I don't have it, uh, handy right now.
Pretty good, though, I'm sure. Are there any issues with, um, like, the building code as to, or fire code as to length to stairwell or anything like that, Jim, or is there?
Yeah, there is, but this is, um, you're covered in this because it's, the stairway's on either end. Where, where you get into trouble is dead ends, basically. And the only dead end you see here would be in a new building near the sta- very near the stairway. Not that one on the other end.
Oh, here?
Yeah, down, down there. That's the only place, and it's, it, it's about twenty-foot difference. And it changes with the sprinkler system, and you can guarantee the building department's gonna, or the fire department's gonna make a sprinklers, just go into this building.
Yeah, and I, I think the connector that wasn't there before is just, it adds character to the project and ties the buildings together.
Is it glass?
Can you go back to the connector picture, Dan?
Yes.
The elevation shows the connector.
Is it all, yeah, all glass, like, connect see-through?
Uh, bring up the elevations.
Yeah.
What's underneath it there?
Uh, right here.
Yeah, dumpster, what was that?
Crash.
Yes, those are the dumpsters that are shown on the site plan.
So, Brian, essentially eliminate that whole discussion that we had, I think it was at the last meeting, maybe it's two meetings ago, about, we'll come back to you later, we don't know what we're gonna do. There's no other usable space between the new, I guess not new units, the, the moved units and the restaurant, right?
None, yeah. There's some on that, Jim, there's some on the second floor, right, that might be able to use for the restaurant?
Uh, yeah, there's a, there's a, because of the elevation inside the old bank, is really enough, is enough room for another whole floor, and there is a whole floor over the vault and other spaces around the vault. And we did, we did briefly talk about, basically, if you're gonna design for the future, um, what do you do about, um, exhaust ventilation? Because we've had some cases where, in fact, the exhaust ventilation has been run up the outside of a building. And in this case, I, we started to discuss whether we had to make sure there was a shaft built into the, into this, um, upper level. But there's really the ability with the alley that's out back of this building to run a shaft up, depending on what the restaurant's needs are, but we won't see it. Public won't see it. And the alley is not that great an alley, believe me.
Yeah, but to answer your question, Greg, yeah, it does, it does, uh, fill up the void, if you will.
Yeah, there's some, some space, but it'll likely be restaurant or not big enough to really.
Yeah.
Make a big deal, yeah, okay. And then I guess my only other comment would be that it, I, I love the way this is moving, but I still don't really like the design. It seems to me like it should be more, this is, I don't know, for lack of a better phrase, the urban core of a suburban area, so I think we could go more towards what was just done at, uh, uh, was it one ninety-eight? More just all brick rather than, you know, splitting up and making bands. It's not that big of a building anyways. I would like to see it more look like, uh, like it's been there a while, rather than it's modern, maybe doing something. If you're looking for balconies, Juliette balconies, but doing more all-brick, rather than making it look a little bit modern with, with splitting up the, the, um, you know, breaking up the facade a little bit here. Um, it just seems to me, sort of, out of place when we're attaching it to a very old building as it is. I like that there's brick in it, but I think it should go more towards, like, it's been there for a while.
Well, you, you can look at it several ways. You can look at it that you wanna break the building down, so you, uh, you basically modulate the materials and the in and out of the building, which we've done with some of the buildings that we've approved. Or you can say, we just want a brick mass, and you deal with it in the windows or something like that. I kind of like seeing it broken down, quite frankly. And it really, even though it's, uh, pedestrian attached, it's really not, it's not trying to mimic the bank in any way. It's a different building.
I guess the way I look at it is the breaking down of the buildings, to me, and I'm not an architect, but I could tell when it's a broken down building that it's new. Being directly next to and now connected to an old building, I don't wanna immediately look at it and say, I know that's new.
Hmm.
All in the eyes of the beholder.
Like a copper walkway. You know, in Boston, they don't allow those anymore, in the city of Boston. They, they make a big deal of not having those bridges across. There's a couple over by Boston Medical Center. And they just, as a policy, like, twenty years ago, so we're not gonna allow that anymore, because.
Why is that?
Uh, architectural integrity, uh, a lot of architects try to connect things to make it easier for them. Uh, I've seen about three or four of them, in my experience, that they've tried to do it and they get shut down. I mean, is the reason why we're not connecting these buildings, um, because we, we don't have enough parking, just generally?
We've got easement rights, Mike, in that alleyway.
I mean, just, it just seems like wasted space if you are gonna do that. I'm not thrilled with the bridge, but it, I do, I, if, if the bridge is the cost of having stuff on the street in the bank and on the third floor, then, okay. But is there something else you could do there? Could you make that an atrium? Could you? I don't know, it just seems like wasted space.
But what's the, what's the easement, Brian? Would it some underground? Uh, there's some, you know, the people, some on, from the Albion Street, the town, um, has some easement rights there too, that we have to keep open. So we can't put anything on the ground. That's right.
The bridge is the one thing I did like that does make it look older. Because I see, I used to live in Southie, you'd see him, I would see him walking, when I was a good one, walking to work every day in like the old four-point buildings there, you know, they, you know, they've kind of teed it, yeah, it does look old, whereas the rest of the building doesn't.
So.
I'm not gonna beat a dead horse.
My question would be, would it be wrong to try to make this look like it was always part of the bank building and just extend the block? And instead of brick, go all stucco, or go granite, or go, you know, almost mimicking with arch windows and things like that, 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 you know, just extending the bank, if you may.
Well, I, I gotta say, Chip, I'm kind of with Jim. I think this is a transition. Because if you go across the street on Chestnut, they're all wood frames. If you go to the next building up Chestnut, it's wood frame. If you go to Albion Street, those buildings there, I think, are wood frame in front of it as well. So this is a little bit, for me, a transition zone. Um, I hear what you guys are saying, but I, I, I guess I just see it differently.
So it's funny, Tom, I guess that's, you take it that way. I took it, I don't like it because it is a transition zone. It's now it's old building, new building, wood frames, instead of just kind of a soft.
Right, trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll hear you.
So let me, let me ask a question. What about wood frame clavard? Yeah, that might do it. Bring it, bring it back to an old warehouse type, type situation. Not, not have it be brick, not have it be hard.
You mean like a hardy board or something?
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I, at this point, I like this, the massing, if you want to get that. I like the, I kind of like the bridge. I love the fact that we're reusing the third floor of the bank. Um, I guess I'd like to see what some of the options for the, the new building, if we call it that, would be.
So you'd, you'd recreate sixty-two foundry, basically, or down there here in your mind?
Maybe.
I guess what makes it look modern for me, I, I think I said this, but maybe I didn't make it as clear, is the breaking up. I think that, to me, is a newer style, having the different, um, I don't know, depths in the facade.
Well, it's easy enough for them to take the, what we see in front of us, and, and those gray areas, basically, just tell them, tell the computer, basically, fill it in with brick, and we can see what it looks like. They, the one thing, when you see the walkway across, the, the whole image here, you can't see, it's a flat screen, that walkway is back quite a bit from the face of the building. Right now, it looks like it's right near the front, and it's not. So the three-dimensional nature of this is really not showing, but to, to your point, basically, you know, they can basically give us a few images with different types of materials. If, in fact, the idea or concept here is balconies, windows, that sort of thing, and we're talking about strictly materials, then they can do that. You know, they can even, they could even run the cornice line straight through as opposed to having it break up. And you can get a, a good idea as to whether that's a better idea for the whole street, easily.
I would agree. You know, we just, we've done this with other projects. I think when we, if we're presented with a few options, usually one stands out to the majority of us, we go, yeah, that's the one, you know, whether it's the color, the material. You know, whenever we've done it, we've usually been able to come to some consensus without a lot of back and forth, you know, so. If, Brian, if the applicant is willing, you work to go back again, it sounds like what you're getting from the board is headed in the right direction. This is a good improvement over what we saw before. And maybe now it's, what else can we do with that, the building, the, the colors, the materials?
I would suggest to maybe, um, comments that were made about match materials, basically, as well as adding bricks to the, to where this, uh, gray area, you could do the reverse, basically, with the gray area where the brick is, and you can see two different types of buildings. What the gray area is at the moment, you can figure it could be clapboards, or it could be a stone surface or, or stucco. But you get a sense as to what an all-gray building would look like versus an all-brick building. But you get a sense as to what an all gray building would look like versus an all brick building at the same time, instead of this sort of. You know, building that is a mix of both.
Yeah, can you go back to the rendering that shows, shows both buildings? And is that gray supposed to sort of match the, the bank building?
Uh, we have, we haven't picked a gray yet or settled on many colors. So you know, we're, we're thinking of stucco. You know, pebble stone or yeah, something that complements the bank, obviously. Sorry, this is the previous design. This one.
Yeah. So Dan, are you understanding what the board is asking for? Is that something you think you can, you can? What are your thoughts, Dan? Is our.
We can provide some options from different materials as it's kind of been stated in the board, you know. It, it is a subjective thing, so we can run through options. We, we can run a brick option and we can run, you mentioned clapboard. Or you mentioned hardy panels. Sorry, Chip, I, I believe it was you who made.
Yeah, I don't, I just think it could be something to. To be a little different as compared, you know, kinda what Greg was saying was. Or even to blend it into the neighborhood a little bit more.
Jim, I have a question. Sorry.
And even seeing this picture. I think, I think Jim brought it up, running that, seeing an option with that corner, cornice line at the top. Is that what it's called? Running throughout the whole building with, would, you know, sort of match the bank building. I'd like to at least see that too. So yes, different material, but a little different design up there too.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that.
But concept wise, yeah, I think this is a great movement.
Okay, so carry the, the cornice line at the corner.
Yeah, the parapet, I guess.
Yep.
Yeah, I might suggest that the working group help with some of these ideas.
Yeah, we'll run them by Jim and, and I think, Dan, when you do these options.
Working group of one.
Dan, when you do these options, it's good to show it like this with the bank building.
Okay.
Does the board agree with that? Because I think you wanna see.
Yes. Works. It's out of context.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Greg, I mean, not Greg, I mean, Brian, and I, I'd still love to see it from the Albion Street side.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense, Tom. You get that, Dan?
Yes, I made, I made a note of, of. Of what you guys are asking. So a couple of options. Blended it more, carry the, the, the parapet at the top, so it mimics the bank. Options to show the bank for context and a graphic of the Albion Street side. Are you guys okay? I guess I should ask, with the base design here, are you guys looking? To modify that as well or?
I, I would think we have to work on the top part, the top two floors first, and then see how the base works, whether. Whether it might be a, a brick material to match what's up above. Or in, in one case, in another case, it may be. Stucco from there all the way up across the whole building, so. Let's talk about it as we go forward.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else, board members? Brian, anything else?
Yeah, just to let the board know, so we're, we're finishing up our traffic report. We're gonna submit that to you and the T A C. So we still have to go to T A C, Mr. Chair. And that will get on their agenda when we can and get you a copy of the traffic report. I think. Probably the, the, you know, we're gonna get Rick Salvo to get his drainage report into the town engineer. Now that we know that we, you know, the building itself, I think. Is in a good spot. We really can't move the building. I think we can fine tune the architectural aspects of it, so we're, we're gonna work on that too. And then lastly, we need to extend your time on this because this expires on November thirtieth. So I would suggest. Till the end of January. But we're happy, I think, I think we, you know, we, we had said, if I can just add, we, we had said to the board from the beginning, we looked at this as a work in progress and we would. You know, we, we know we have a building that needs to be. Dealt with and, and we wanted to work with the board and find. How, you know, the best way to, to make it work and utilize it and. I think we're. I think we're heading in a right direction. We appreciate your help.
I would, I would suggest that we go beyond. The January twenty-fifth date, which is the. So that would give you three meetings from now.
Yeah, we'll extend to whatever you want, Chip, whatever you think.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I don't see that, that there's enough work here. You're gonna be at least three more meetings. I mean, if we could wrap it up in three meetings, that would be wonderful, but.
What do you want, Dave, for an extension? You know me, I'm always happy to extend out. I, I don't like dealing with extending over and over.
Do you wanna go to Feb fifteen? That gives us four meetings?
Yep.
And if we get to the end of January and think we need more, then we can go, you know. You know, if we're there. By the end of January, then, then we're covered, yeah. Okay. Alright, so February fifteenth. So we'll need a motion on that before we continue the hearing. To December, I assume we'll continue in to December and we'll have some options and next steps there. Cause that's before we go, right, so. But we'll open up the public testimony if there's nothing else, board members at this time. Just one thing, maybe I'm way ahead of it though, Brian, where you're short parking spaces and. Obviously, we can't compel you to look at that, but having walked around down there. There's some lots in that area, whether it's the Wakefield daily item or even behind. Up there, has your, is the owner here? Thought about partnering with some of those folks or using some of those folks if there's a restaurant or if they're a little short on parking for the housing? To address that through available parking in the air, especially at night?
Yes, we already have, we have, Tom, we've already actually had discussions on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you brought it up here, but I was just thinking about it.
Yeah, we, 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 we've had some discussions with some neighboring, neighboring properties about that possibility.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we discussed it here, Tom, because we were just much farther apart.
Yeah.
With, with where we were before, but. No, thanks for bringing it up.
Yep.
From the, from the type of restaurant you guys were talking about, maybe we're jumping ahead also. Sounds like a valet type thing. Have you thought about where that could happen?
You know, usually people, my restaurant clients now, Uber is just like. It's just incredible restaurants. That's what everyone does because they wanna, you know, go to the bar and have a good time and not have to worry about driving, so. That's more of a thing that happens, but haven't really thought about the valet. Aaron Kokinda, the economic development director has been in touch with my client. And they're talking, she's, she's gonna help out as far as trying to. To fill this with a good, with a good. Good tenant. So we're glad to be working with her.
I think this would be an amazing catalyst for downtown. I heard Grill twenty-three wants to go in.
Okay, the other building, so we'll be good.
Well, I can tell you this, you know, without naming names, there, there is a, I, I've been contacted by some big names that are very interested in Wakefield. So.
Right.
You're gonna be very surprised potentially on some people, some. Some eateries that wanna come to Wakefield.
Guy Fieri.
Brails, okay. All good discussion. For another time. All right, we'll open up the public testimony at this time. If anyone from the public has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening.
I move that we continue this. To December fourteenth. And that we accept the petitioner's. Offer of extending the time for a decision till February fifteenth.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Tom.
Everybody.
Any discussion on the motions? Voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I go, yes, okay. Thank you for the updates tonight. Heading in the right direction. We'll talk to you next month.
Thank you so much.
So much, board members. Have a great night.
You too. We get Thanksgiving.
You too.
Alright, our next new hearing, continued hearing. Twenty-three dash twenty and twenty-three dash twenty-one, Sanderson. Barrow. De Nocimento. One twenty-three Pleasant.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, representing the person who you just stated, Sanderson. Sanderson, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Great, so. So I've had the pleasure of working with Sanderson for quite some time. He purchased one twenty-three Pleasant Street. In Wakefield and he's about to endeavor to do some significant renovations and, and wants to do an addition onto the property. It's a legal non-conforming two-family dwelling. His is, has been confirmed with the building department. And his desire is to put an addition onto that property and that's why we're here tonight. He's requesting. A finding and a variance, and I'll explain those in some, some detail if I may.
Okay.
Okay.
This will get continued here?
It is, yeah. This has, this, this property has an ease, has a drainage line going, going across it. An easement for the town. It had gone to town meeting and received an approval to relocate that drainage easement. It, the town meeting vote. Authorized the Wakefield Town Council to. Relocate the easement in conjunction with the owner of the property. So Sanderson bought the property and he had thought that that had all been done, but as it turned out. The town meeting vote happened authorizing it. But nothing happened before that, after that, I should say, so the prior owner never. Never, you know, never finished it, if you will, never went to the town council and the town engineer and actually did it, so. When Sanderson went to put his addition on, he thought that it had all been done. And then it was pointed out by the town engineering department that, well, wait a minute, you've gotta, you've gotta, where you wanna put your addition is where the pipe is. So, so we, we started this hearing or we continued it right out of the gate because. Prior to the first hearing, we were notified of, of that by the engineering department, so we needed to research it. Since that time, Sanderson has hired two companies that have gone out and actually located the pipe. They found it. Worked with the engineering department to dig it up and locate it. And now we're working with the engineering department on where to relocate it on the property. So Sanderson's gonna do that and. And hopefully receive approval from the town council, as was approved by town meeting to relocate that pipe. So then he can put his addition in, so we needed to kind of hold up our process. To figure out what was happening there. The town engineer actually confirmed in an email, I think you got that, Dave, today, that he's fine with us going forward. Notwithstanding that has, that hasn't happened yet, it would just, if you, if you approve this, it would just be a condition. That we need to resolve that issue with the town engineering department before constructing the addition. Because we're well on our way to doing that, so. We'd like to, if the board is inclined to approve this, to be dealing with this on parallel paths instead of. Not going forward with you, you know, we wanna keep both things moving at the same time. And town engineer is fine with that. So with that said. This is our site plan. And as I mentioned, it's a two-family house right now and it's got a deck on the back. And what Sanderson proposes to do is to take off the deck. And construct an addition, which is the green. Line here. As you can see from the zoning table. There is, there's no need. For any variances as it relates to the addition and just to go through that. As far as I should say setbacks and dimensional tables is one on stories, which I'll get to in a minute, and that's the, the reason for the variance. So we have. What's required, as I mentioned, this is a two-family house, but it's grandfathered in a single residence district. So dimensionally, it needs to meet the single residence district requirements. We've got a front yard setback requirement of twenty, existing is nineteen point eight, we're not changing that. Side yard setback. This side obviously meets it by a ton, even with the addition fifteen feet, not even close, but the. Relevance side is nine point eight. We are going closer there. To nine point six, but we can do that with a finding because it's already non-conforming on the side. Rear setback is twenty-five feet. It's forty point three feet existing, thirty-one feet to the existing deck. We're removing the deck, so we're gonna be twenty-seven feet from the rear in meeting the requirement of twenty-five feet. Frontage is staying the same, lot width. Is getting a little bit reduced because the lot narrows in the back. And the lot width is determined where it goes through the principal residence. And again, where that doesn't meet the requirement, that can also be. Relieved via a finding. And then we have lot area, which obviously isn't changing. Maximum building coverage is going up, but meets the zoning requirement. And minimum open area is going down, but meets the zoning requirement. So that is your site plan. Okay, architectural plans, these are the floor plans, so the first floor. Second floor. This is where you can see the addition going on in the back, adding a bedroom on the first floor with a bathroom and same thing with the set unit upstairs on the second floor. Third floor, really just, and this is where the variance comes in because he's expanding the use on the third floor. So now it technically becomes a story and now it's, it's. It, it with, where it's in a single residence district, two and a half stories are allowed. And so we need a variance and it's really. Driven. It's really not changing. The elevation of the house, it's really more for the use of the third story now that drives it to be. A story under the definition of our zoning bylaw.
Brian, what was, what was up there beforehand?
There was, I'm gonna get, I can show you that, Jim, hang on, I think it's. Pretty sure that's in here, right? Sanderson, it's.
I didn't come across it.
It should be, it wasn't existing two bedrooms upstairs.
Yeah, it was two bedrooms up there, Jim, but it wasn't a story. It was classified as a half story. So there was already a use going on up there, but. What's happening here is because. This roof, see the roof line?
Yep.
On this, that's what's expanding it and now it's classified as a story in the back.
But does that roof line continue with the front of the building as well? No.
No, it's kind of a dormer up, you see it?
No. Okay.
So. That's our, that's our request. You know, you have a unique circumstance because of the, of the existing house. It's a grandfathered in a single district. And. You know, as far as. The hardship goes, they really need the living space, so it is a hardship. It's, it's Sanderson and who else is living at the house, Sanderson?
So my parents live upstairs and it's very tough for them on the third floor for the bedroom, because my, my brother also lives with us. So it, it's just very tight for them to go to the third floor for a bedroom and on the first floor, there's only one bedroom, right? So they can't utilize that unit, so that unit is the one that I live on. So the second floor bedroom would actually be for my parents.
And then, you know, we don't think there's really any. Negative impact. We have a lot of support from both direct the butters on both sides that support this. They have a great neighborhood relationship with both of them. And I can present that in a, in a moment. And I could present that in a, in a moment. There you go. So this is from. One twenty-five, as you face the house, uh, the Schneider's, they live right next door. They're former clients of mine. Uh, and they support this and they're the ones that would be impacted if anybody, because they're, they're the ones that. Are closest. And then the other folks on the other side, which have the pretty big setback, uh, they also supported at one twenty-nine Pleasant Street.
Happy answering questions.
Brian, do we have a copy of that?
You will in a minute.
Okay.
Just got it tonight.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions, board members? We heard from Concom and Fire Department, no, no objections, comments. So did the site plan, it's still to be determined where the easement, because it, from the letter I see here, it's going right through the lot, right? I mean.
Yeah, it goes, it goes, um, it goes right. It basically, let me bring up the site plan real quick.
It looks like it goes like right into the middle of our country.
Goes right. I'll show you where it goes. Right now that pipe, uh, Sanderson located it pretty much comes, comes like right through here, right, Sanderson? Right near these steps?
Correct. So it doesn't touch the deck, but will we open the stairs? It's probably a foot away from that, that.
Probably like right in here going like this.
Correct.
So if we, if, if, if. And kudos to the engineering department because Sanderson thought the plan is, is to move it over here. And Sanderson thought. That had already been done. That's what he was told when he, when he bought the property, that it had been completed and, um. You know, just a misunderstanding, no big deal, but thank God the engineering department let him know because it would have torn up the pipe when he went to do the addition. So.
Yep. Okay. Now I, I see the town engineer's letter. He's got, it's like a copy of. All the lots in that area. Um, and yeah, it looks like it goes right through the middle. It cuts from diagonally right through the middle of the lot, you know? So, okay. So they, they're working on it, but it's going to go around, obviously, whatever.
Yeah. So if the board approves this, the town engineer would like a condition on the approval that would say the applicant shall not apply for or obtain a building permit. For the addition until the town engineer confirms in writing that he is satisfied that the existing drainage easement on the property. Will not be compromised or negatively negatively impact in any way by said addition. And that's going to be accomplished by us moving the easement and the pipe.
Yep.
Correct. So that will be a condition and that allows us to, if you're inclined to approve this, to, to, you know, get, get the appeal period going and still be working with the town engineer on that instead of. One before the other.
Do you need then some sort of condition on? Time then, um, because you're, the variance you need to exercise within a year, right?
Yeah.
So how do you want to deal with that part of it then?
I think.
Say, say if the town doesn't do anything for two years. I mean, hopefully that's not the case, but.
Yeah, we're gonna have to either extend it or come back, um, but I.
But haven't we dealt with it before? We've, we've done something like you have, so you don't have to come back and it doesn't, because it's not really your client's fault. We've said something like you have. A year from. I don't know what you would do in this case, but. Maybe it is the only way to, to, to work it is you have to come back in this case.
A little bit with special permits. I mean, with the variance, it's hard. Um. Because we have to exercise it within a year. We can come back for an extension with variance for six months, which we've done before. You know, unless you wanted to say something like, you know, you deem it to be exercised by us, you know, doing something that that will be deemed to be an exercise of the permit.
That's probably just more prudent to come back.
I think what you are saying, Greg, is that by the time, the concern is that by the time we get it, uh, papered. And then actually doing the work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then if that, because not, because doing the, yeah, doing the work isn't necessarily. On your client, if the town drags their feet.
Oh, no, we're gonna have to do the work. It is on my client. Yeah. So the town, we're gonna, we're gonna. You know, the, the, the town working with us to do this is an accommodation. So the actual labor to move that pipe, Sanderson, that's your understanding, right? You're gonna have to do that.
Yes, correct. So my, um, last conversation with Bill was the fact that we would be picking up that cost, uh, moving the pipe. He would come out to make sure it was done correctly, um, sign it off, and then we would be good on that part.
Okay, okay. So then I take, I, my comment is void then, I guess.
As possible too. So we were trying to get it moving, um, as soon as possible.
I mean, you know, in essence, the town and hopefully the town council are making a, a, an accommodation to. My client, you know, they don't have to move this. So, um, and the good thing is Sanderson's in the business, so he, he can do this work himself.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, board members?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Once again, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question about this project, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. And as the night goes on, there are a few and fewer members of the public.
That's a good sign.
All right, we'll close it to public testimony, seeing no hands, so. So board members, it sounds like we're, if you're comfortable, unless there's any concerns proceeding to a vote here, we need a. Variance in the finding, two separate votes.
Chair, could you also extend this to January thirteenth? Because this, we have a lot that expire on the thirty-first. Um, and I think this will happen pretty quick, but again, I just don't like to mess with the holidays and Gail's vacations if they're coming up.
Extend to January thirteenth.
Yep.
Before you. Okay. Chip, if you're.
Yeah, I had, I was muted. I kept talking to myself. I had a great conversation. Brian, we're looking for a finding and a variance. Can you just review quickly what we're looking for?
Yeah, we're looking for, um, we're looking for a finding, uh, that the addition. Um, the change, uh, i- in the addition is, um. And in the use, because it's a, it's an alteration of the non-conforming use as a two-family. Um, so the additions, um, uh, both dimensionally and from the use, uh, is not substantially more detrimental. Uh, the, uh, to the neighborhood.
Right. So it's really both prongs, right? Because in some cases you're intensifying it, but.
This is.
Both prongs.
Yeah, because we're going closer and we're making a lot with, yeah. So this is really. That it's, you know, it's, it is, it is intensifying it, but it's not substantially more detrimental.
Correct. Both prongs. We would, we would be finding with this vote. Yes.
So that's the finding.
And the variance is on the third story, right? The modifications are creating that third story.
Creating the, the use of the third floor. Does it?
Yeah, and I'm just going, I'm just gonna, um, just gonna share the screen one more time, um, for Jim. Hang on a second, if I could. Jimmy, you there? Jim McBane?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I can, if I can ask you, it looks like the height of this building isn't getting, it's, it's.
The height, the height of the, the building is, the way it's shown basically is the same height as the original roof.
That's, yeah, I just want to make sure that we weren't.
He's just got a lift on this side, which is driving, which is driving the building department.
Yep. Thank you. Just want to make sure that you weren't sink on that. Thank you. So, yeah, just a story.
So first of all, we'll, so Mr. Chairman, I move that we find. That the addition has presented to us tonight. Although it increases the non-conformity on the right side from nine point eight feet. To nine point six, nine point eight inches to nine point six inches. Uh. That. Both from a dimensional and from a use standpoint, uh, that it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. And if we did find, and if, and.
Oh, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, and, and Chip, if you could also just reference the lot with getting, uh.
And the lot, that's a bit smaller.
Thank you.
As well. For the finding.
Uh, with the condition about the, um, the easement being resolved.
Oh.
The town engineer's condition.
Stated by the town engineer. Yeah. I didn't write that down.
Okay, so that's the full motion with the condition.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion on the motion? Regular voting membership?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous.
Okay, I move that we grant the variance. Um. To allow, uh, in this district, a third story has presented to us by the plan, as shown in the plans presented to us this evening.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I too vote yes. It's unanimous.
And the extension, you need to vote on that?
Yes.
We extend the time for a decision, uh, to January thirteenth.
Second.
You want any discussion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Good luck to you, Sanderson.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it so much. You know, we love Wakefield. We've been here for the last, um, two years, me and my family, you know? So it's, it's amazing to be able to do this for my father and, and, you know, for him was a big deal, um, not having the, the. You know, having to go all the way to the third floor. So now knowing that he's going to be able to get his, his room on the second floor, he's going to be very, very happy. And I just want to say thank you to all you guys. It means the world to us.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you too. Okay. Next up, cases twenty-three dash twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and thirty, One Sylvan LLC at one eighty-four Water.
Hey. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGreal on behalf of the applicant, uh, who you're familiar with, One Sylvan LLC. Uh, Severio is here tonight and I think, uh, Carlton Quinn is also here. Uh, Carlton, is Carlton here, Severio?
I'm here, Brian.
Oh, great. Thank you. Rob and Rob Passione, the architect is here as well. I don't think there. I don't think there'll be a lot of input, but they're respectfully here in case the board has any, uh, questions. Uh, I think very similar, uh, to one ninety-eight, uh, that this is, uh, very close, if not at the end. Um, we worked all things out again with the town engineer, uh, today. We went back and forth. Um, number of times with, um, Tim Wilson and with Bill Renault, um, and I think we're, we're there on this. Um. We have submitted to you, um, all revised plans. This, we also have a, the town engineer asked a few couple of notes to be put on the plan for him. So I have a revised plan that. We, we got done today, Mr. Chair, just like one ninety-eight that I will send to you momentarily. Um, the architectural plans haven't changed. We submitted, I know, probably one of the most detailed O and M plans. You'll see, we have draft conditions. TAC memo has been submitted. We're meeting their conditions with contributions for the, for the flashing beacons and the, uh. All the infrastructure work and the bike rack and everything we talked about there. Um, and, um, basically we're, we're hoping to potentially wrap this up tonight. That is our goal. So, um. I can, I, I think, you know, I can send you that updated site plan, um, and, um, you know, I don't know if you want to see it, that there were just a couple of. Technical notes that really dealt with more connection things and stuff that the town engineer wanted on the plan that we put on the plan. So. Uh, but you have not gotten a final memo from him on this, but I have an email from Bill or a, a text message. And I told him my goal would be, uh, if the board were inclined to, uh, close this out. And, uh, he said, he has no, he said, I am okay with that. So. Um, he is fine. Uh, we've gone over the conditions that he wanted and I, I, I've added some from what I submitted to you on Friday, based on my discussions with Bill Renault today. Uh, to make sure that we had all of those conditions, all of those, right? I'm sorry, Chip.
We walked through the conditions as we did in the previous one.
I can't, yep.
If that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. I'm just looking for the, did you, did you send us the memo from Bill?
No, he didn't have a memo. Uh, he, he, he basically had an email to us on what he wanted. Um, and then.
No, but the email, I, I saw the one from one twenty-three. Did you forward me an email from him?
Will you copy? Let me see here. Hold on a second. I'll tell you right now.
There were several things that came in today, so I do.
Yeah, there was a lot going on. They couldn't get to some of this stuff until today, so. Here we go. Let me see if I can share this. And I can forward it to you. So this is his email, one fifty-seven. Looks like there are a few items not added to plan. Can we get those on there? Um, so one was, he said the water and sewer surfaces are still coming off Water Street. They should come off of Melvin. They were wrong on that. There was a disconnect. They, they are off of Melvin and they, and he acknowledged that to us. So he's fine with that. And then he wanted these notes added to the plan, and that's what I talked to you about. I'll chew, be those.
Okay.
So those have now been added by Carlton. That's why, that's why we have an updated plan, because we did that today. And then he talked about the INI fee. And we pointed out to him that we get credit because it's an existing building and apartment's already on there. So I'll show you a subsequent email where he's estimated that. And then he said the Cataldo condition we used for the infrared, that's, that's now I've added that to the conditions. You'll see it because we're going to be infilling curbing. On Water Street, as you know, because we're gonna, there's so many driveway openings and Water Street was just repaved, so he just wants to make sure that that work is done with infrared technology when we, when we do it. So, so those, that has all been addressed and I'm going to, uh, forward this to you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. There you go. And I'm gonna find the other one. I'm gonna take you off, so you're not getting all my attorney-client privileged stuff here. We're thankful to the end. They really worked out on this today to. So he, this is where he's saying updated INI fee is below. And this is where we get credit for existing. And so the INI fee is twenty-five fifty-seven, twenty-five seventy-seven, twenty-seven. And that's been updated on the draft conditions that you're gonna see in a minute. So that was, you know, it was getting near the end of the day and we were hoping, he was hoping to get a memo. He just couldn't. Um, so that's when I said, we've got everything, Bill, you okay with us going forward? And he said, yeah, I'm fine with it. Okay, so. I'm gonna bring up the draft conditions, if that's okay?
Yeah, do we actually have them?
Yes.
I sent them, but I've changed them.
Well, I have what he sent.
Yeah. I've revised them, I should say. So this is all the standard fare. This is seven dwelling units. They're all two bedrooms, so obviously, one of the two bedrooms is gonna be affordable. And then we've got the traffic advisory, um, contribution for the crosswalk and the bike rack. I plugged in the figure that he wanted that I just showed you. I've just belted and suspended this just to cover him that Carlton, Carlton, you put these on the, uh, well, no, you didn't put these on the plan. These were not on the plan. He had other things, so like, these are the other conditions that he wanted that I put in. And this is the condition from Cataldo Ambulance that I talked about.
Brian, where's, where's the bike rack on in here?
Uh, the bike rack chip is gonna be a contribution. It's gonna actually be put on the playground, not sell it.
No, I know that, but you're, is it, are we doing it? Are you doing it, or is the town doing it?
We're giving the money and the town's doing it.
Okay.
And it's for that purpose, right in this condition.
And to say that installation where flashing beacons, I know that.
And for a bike rack for NASA, I'm big on.
Okay. And what about the fencing?
Yeah, that's in here. Um, let's see. Number nine, right here, Chip.
Yeah, okay.
And I put, you had mentioned, Chip, about the, uh, you know, make it the appropriate style and length and height, because you don't just want to.
Right.
Yeah, so I get, I just made, you know, it has to be, you know, through the Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
Or should we say you?
Department of Public Works is fine.
That's what we got.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, I would ask that these conditions be, if we move forward with a vote tonight or with a motion, that these conditions be known as the conditions as presented.
Any other comments, questions? But items, board members? All right, once again, perhaps for the last time, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll close with the public testimony.
So I'm gonna make a motion, uh, for.
Chip, not to, this, this has to be extended also, Mr. Chi, if you wanna handle that to the thirteenth. Okay.
So before we even get started, I move that we accept the petitions, uh, offer to extend this to the January thirteenth date.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you.
So for purposes of this, of these motions, Mr. Chairman, the final site plan by Alan Major is revised, uh, within November sixteen, twenty twenty-two date. And the final architectural plans by R P Architectural Studio dated November eleventh. These two are twenty twenty-two. So one, I move that we grant a special permanent site plan approval pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty-two and one ninety dash forty-five of the Wakefield zoning bylaws allowing a seven-unit carl star garden style apartment in a combination with a retail store service establishment for restaurant use as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. And I do this, but with the following findings. A, that the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations as requiring a special permit in the district for which the application is made. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience and welfare. This is a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield and the surrounding area. C, the requested use will not create or add to undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety as the note from T A C represents. That the requested use will not overlay any public water drainage or sewage system or any other municipal system for such an extent requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, and the general welfare. E, that the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district and or adjoining districts not be detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. F, that the requested use will not, by addition to a neighborhood, cause any excess of that particular use that would be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. And that this use will put a vacated and blighted property to beneficial use and add to the affordable housing inventory. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, and it will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not nauseous to the residential use. Uh, and that we also have reviewed the section of the bylaw which is pertinent part states that in reviewing a site plan, the special permit granting authority, us, other applicable agencies shall consider, among other things, the following. One, convenience and safety of vehicular pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties, and movements. Two, adjacencies of the methods of disposable for sewage, refuse, and other waste and the methods for surface and stormwater drainage. And three, provisions for off-street loading and unloading of vehi- vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related uses on the lot or tract. And we considered all of the above reference criteria and are satisfied that we should grant the special permit. And the conditions, as we just went over to this evening, uh, would be attached as presented tonight.
I'll second that.
You. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety thirty-two, one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing reductions and or alterations to the dimensional requirements and or alterations requirements under section one ninety dash thirty-two D, table two of the bylaw related to a seven-unit garden apartment in combination with a restaurant use as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans, including but not limited to the following. Allowing a reduction in the required lot area as shown on the final site plan. Allowing a reduction in the required lot width as shown in the final site plan. Allowing a reduction in the required front side and rear setbacks to that as shown on the final site plan. Allowing open area of fourteen per two percent as shown on the final site plan. Allowing a building coverage of fifty-two point three percent as shown on the final site plan. And any other reductions or alterations from requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-two and the table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow the project to be constructed as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans. We have the same findings as the last per- special permit, and furthermore, the reductions and or alterations will enhance the multifamily project as a whole and allow it to benefit the neighborhood in which it is situated. Uh, the conditions are the same as already presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That two is unanimous.
And finally, we, I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to section one ninety dash twenty-three of the Wakefield zoning bylaw allowing a retail store or service establishment. A, we find that the requested use is listed in the table of use regulations as requiring a special permit in the district for the application is made. B, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience and or welfare. That there is a dire need for housing, including affordable housing in the town of Wakefield and the surrounding area. C, the requested use will not create or nor add to undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. D, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewage system or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, and the general welfare. E, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjourning districts by and not be more detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. And F, that the requested use will not be by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of the particular use that could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And that this use will put a vacated and blighted property to a beneficial use and add to the affordable housing inventory. And G, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and will not adversely affect the zoning district. Furthermore, the non-residential uses permitted in the zoning district are not nauseous to the residential conditions as already presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Uh, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Statute unanimous. Okay. All requested applications and relief are approved. Severio, good luck to you.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate all the help.
Yeah, and one more piece of business on this, Mr. Chair. We had also requested a variance um, for, uh, parking, uh, requirements, which it turns out we did not need. So I would respectfully request that you accept a withdrawal of that application without prejudice.
The request for the withdrawal of the variance without prejudice.
That was one of the applications that we had filed, Dave.
All right, I'll second that.
Thank you. I was just hoping to. Which case number was that, Brian? Oh, go ahead. Um, I think it might be, Dave, um, twenty-three dash thirty?
Uh, twenty-four was a variance, twenty-three dash twenty-four?
Twenty-four would be then, yeah.
Variance, standard to Ross Street parking. Okay, so. So the request is to withdraw without prejudice, case number twenty-three dash twenty-four, which was a variance request, as you stated, okay? I just wanna get that on the record. I just.
Yeah, thank you.
Four separate applications. Okay.
That was twenty-four, Dave, just from my records?
Twenty-three dash twenty-four, correct.
Thank you. I'll send, yep.
So the request is to, um, withdraw that without prejudice. The motion was made by Chip. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion on the motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you. Now we're done, Severio.
Now I can say, thank you very much, everyone, for your help. I appreciate it. I'll, uh, hopefully see you guys on the next one.
Well, when's ninety-seven starting?
Uh, one thing at a time. Actually, we did start the asbestos abatement on this one, uh, Monday, so.
Okay.
Where there's remediation on this one, I think we're gonna try to expedite this one and, um, get that resolved. This one's a little bit hairier, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
All right, thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, board members, on to new hearings. We did two earlier. Twenty-three dash thirty-three, Hallmark Health Properties, Inc., at eight eighty-eight Main Street.
Great, Mr. Chair, uh, members of board, thank you. For the record, Attorney Brian McGreal, representing Hallmark Health, which was before you back in two thousand seventeen. We're back again. Um, I am, uh, going to point out my team members and let them, uh, introduce themselves a little bit for their role and in who they're working for. I'm gonna start, uh, if you guys could all unmute, I'd appreciate that. Um, and so why don't I start with, um, Dave, you can go first, our architect.
Hi, hi, Dave Blowen from Ken Design.
Great, and Ryan Fay, go ahead.
I am fair, Marlowe's Wakefield Tuss Medicine Operations Manager for Marlowe's Wakefield Hospital.
And Ryan Fuller?
Ryan Fuller, Tufts Medicine Strategy.
And Justin?
Uh, Justin Moska, uh, Site Civil Engineer with V H B.
Great. I got everybody, Ryan?
You got it, Brian.
I got the team. Great.
All right, Steve McCarthy.
Oh, with Steve. I didn't see him.
Yeah.
Oh.
Hi, there's Steve McCarthy, Shields Healthcare, uh, real estate.
Hi, Steve. Sorry, I didn't see you down there.
No, no problem, Brian.
In the Hollywood Square bottom box. So, uh, so thank you, thank you, folks. Um, so we're here before you, um, this is the project that's, uh, situated um, at eight eighty-eight Main Street. Um, I'm sure most of the board members are familiar with this. This, um, was the site of the old Wakefield Subaru. Um, and, um, this, uh, is turned into a beautiful building, beautiful project, uh, serving the town of Wakefield, serving its residents, uh, serving residents of the surrounding communities in Melrose, Stoneham, and Reading and beyond. Um, just a beautiful medical facility they have in the town to be able to go to when you, when you have to have uh, medical services and testing performed. Um, one of the things that's happened in the medical field is there has become a somewhat recent demand for a PET scan process, uh, which is really a tissue scan, uh, which is often done for looking for cancers and different aspects and really close looks at, um, one's organs. And, um, this has become a demand of, um, Melrose Wakefield Hospital, Tufts Medicine, um, that of their patients and for the people in this area. Uh, and it's a difficult service to get, and when people need it, they need it quick, because when you, when you need a PET scan, it's usually uh, because you maybe have been recently diagnosed with cancer or concerns for cancer, so they need the results as quick as possible. Um, so what, what, um, uh, we're looking to do is we're looking to expand that option uh, at this site in Wakefield, and currently, the inside of the building, uh, as far as the equipment and technology that's needed in space, it can't accommodate it. Um, so, uh, the desire is, is, um, which is not unique, is to, uh, provide this service via having a mobile unit come to the site um, once a week or once every two weeks, depending on the need. Um, and it comes in the form of a tractor trailer um, that would deliver the trailer to the back of the building in a certain spot. And it actually connects with the building. Um, so now people that need this service go into the building and and through a connection, which you'll see through our team uh, presenting this, um, it, you actually go through the building and you go get your PET scan done in this mobile unit. Uh, and that's how it's provided. Um, when the tractor, uh, tractor drops off the mobile unit, it leaves the site. So it doesn't stay there. Um, and, uh, when it's time for it to leave, it comes and picks it up. Um, really not a major impact on the site. Um, it has some of, uh, the reason we're before you is because our special permit uh, in site plan approval would need to be modified for this to occur. Um, as you will see, some of the, a minimal amount of parking spaces are affected. I think it's four uh, by this, because we have to, uh, take up some parking area to connect, uh, to the building. Um, and a couple of trees are affected, but we're looking to relocate these trees. So we think it's a great service, uh, to the, uh, town and and to the citizens, um, not a service that everybody wants, but unfortunately. Not a service that everybody wants, but unfortunately that a lot of people need. And when they need it, they need it now, and they need it locally. And that's what. Hallmark is looking to do. They made a commitment coming to Wakefield that they would keep improving services, and that's what they're doing. So. With that said. I think probably the best, the best place to start here is with Justin. Do you kind of want to go over the site plan and then we can have Dave? Dave kind of show how it works from an architectural standpoint?
Yeah, certainly. I just shared my screen. Are you guys seeing the site plan here?
Yes, you gotta blow it up a little bit, though.
Yeah, no, I absolutely will. I just want to make sure I'm showing the right window first. And so, yeah, you should be looking at C one oh, C one oh one. So, thank you, Brian, for going through that. Just as a very quick site orientation, sounds like most people are familiar with the site, but we are at eighty-eight Main Street. And just for an orientation on this plan, Main Street's down the bottom of your plan. And when I'll go through, we're really at the back of the building here from that existing building. And. But the. You know, the proposed improvements that we're planning to do, there's a. A physical modification to the building itself that Dave can describe in a little more detail. But essentially what we're doing is constructing a dock for that trailer that Brian was describing to pull up to. And it'll effectively create a, there's a dock seal that goes with it so that the trailer, which is essentially parked here. I'll just keep drawing on this. And. Once that's there and dropped off, there's a dock seal that comes out. From the the building addition that we're planning to put in. And it really creates an enclosed space that patients that are within the building and, you know, being prepared in the building can come out. And go right into that trailer, get their their scans done, go back inside. It's mildly air-conditioned. So that it never feels like you're completely outside during this. So, general scope of work for this is the building addition itself. We're also putting in to accommodate those trailers. We're putting in a couple of pads. There would be concrete pads here and about here. So when the trailer itself, and I'll draw that in a separate color just so you can see it. And the trailer is going to stick out. Somewhere in this range. Here. So it's about a forty-eight foot trailer that gets dropped off. And so when the trailer's there, there's a total of seven spaces from the existing lot that are that are. Impacted. When the trailer is not there. When that goes away, it's four permanent spaces that get impacted. And that's really just because of where this building falls. Over the existing lot. It needs to stick out into the lot just so we have space to maneuver. You know. Patients and any. Wheelchairs, anything else that needs to be. Accident, that needs to access the trailer. So that's going to stick out a little bit into those parking spaces. So four, it's lots of four permanent spaces. And then the trailer takes up an additional three when it's on site. There'll be some minor sidewalk improvements adjacent to that, just to tie into all the existing. Site layout that's out there. And then one of the other pieces, and I can actually show this on the next plan. I'm going to do the same layout, but just a more detailed plan. We have run truck turns to make sure that the truck can get into the site. And in doing so, you'll see the landscape island that's out there today. The truck has to drive over that landscape island. And so when I go back to the plan that I was on. That's what we were showing here. So instead of having that landscape island, what we'd be doing is modifying it so that it's just a sidewalk that's next to the existing spaces. And that landscape island would turn into the tenuous pavement, just asphalt with with pavement striping on it. To so that it's a no parking area. So that'll allow the truck to come in and do its movement and then leave again. When we do that, when we take that island out, it's, there's a tree in that island today that will need to be removed. There's also next to the building addition, another tree that would need to come out. So we're proposing two new trees to. To replicate those on the perimeter of the parking lot. I think this trailer, when it's there, is only there for about twenty-four hours. It comes during off-hours and it it gets picked up during off-hours. It's only there for one day a week. And so this, these temporary, the temporary loss of spaces is. Is not for very long. And. There's really not a whole lot in the way of changes to dimensional calculations. I think in total, we're reducing. The landscape area by about two hundred square feet, so it's fairly de minimis. And. The. This is in the back of the building, which had a pretty. Significant offset to the property line previously, so we're still at two hundred and four feet. And so there's, we do have a table on there that shows all the. The changes, but there's, other than the parking, there was really nothing significant. I think that's probably a good overview on the site layout. Dave, you want to go through architecture?
Sure. I think the board remembers Dave. Dave's the original architect on this beautiful building, so he's familiar with it because he designed it from day one, so.
Brian, can we go back to that real quick? I had a question on that.
The site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
So. Those temporary pads, do they stick up? Are they below the?
No, they're flush.
All right, so that's what I was confused about that because those parking spots would be gone too if those are.
Yeah, no, it's kind of like a loading dock. It's just that when the trailer's sitting there, it's pretty heavy, so it'll, it would dense asphalt pavement, so that's just there to support the weight of the trailer.
That's all, yeah.
Any others before I move on?
Like Justin said, the. The building's on the backside and by building, it's really just a corridor extension. We were asked to. Make the new dock connector. Fit in with the vocabulary of, you know, make it look like it was always there. So I think the the shapes and the forms right there mimic the other things that are happening around what's. A fairly. Modern building, but you know, still has punched windows and storefronts that. Mimic things that you can find on the Main Street. But this is the backside, so. Not a lot of people will really see it. You can zoom in. You can see the plan. So everything's really, I mean, the. The van's really just providing the modality. The exam room, the support functions that really happen in the building are there today. And, you know, they'll help serve this this van. But so it's connected through the corridor and simply just connects the garage there, as Justin was mentioning. Through this corridor. You go down a slight ramp and into the van. And that's the upper floor. Showing the roof, but there's the upper floor showing the roof. It's very modest addition. And then the elevations. It's all the same materials, the cement board. Gray cement board there that. We used on the original building. Ecotone product. That's pretty much it. There's the building sections. The same exact construction type that's there now.
I think that's probably the overview. Time to get back to you, Brian.
Great. Can you go back to your zoning cable, Justin? Perfect. So Justin touched on this a little bit. So basically. You know, there's little changes, but the only thing that's really. Being affected here. Is the parking space. So we currently need one hundred and twenty-two. We had one hundred and twenty-two. We have our special permit is reduction in the aspects of. Off-street parking. Under Article seven, that was what our special permanent site plan approval was for. So we're going to need that, we're going to need that decision modified to meet what's happening on this plan. And to allow the reduction of parking from one twenty-two down to one eighteen. I think the board knows that. That, and we talked about this when it was permitted, you know, there was always, you know, a lot of, there was a lot of attention on this project. It was interesting because there was a lot of site work that had to be done. People thought there'd be parking in the streets and, you know, I've never gone by that building without. Half the parking lot being available. And that's just, you know, in. Hallmark at the time said, we don't, really don't need this much parking, but that's what's required, and that's why they did it. So. I think we're fortunate now because we don't need all the parking. We certainly have four spaces to give in a lot more than that, so I don't think there will be any. Any negative impact. And as was mentioned, when the when the truck is there, it will go up to seven, Justin. But those are not permanently lost, so they won't be required in the calculation. So it will be a reduction. We're requesting. A modification of that special permit to reflect what's on the site plan. And to reduce the parking requirement from one twenty-two down to one eighteen. Have any questions, Mr. Chair? Board members?
I got, I got a quick one. In general, I'm fine with this. Just a couple, really, one really quick one. What, you've said you're bringing this in on off-hours? You know, there's the condos next door and there's that wood frame on, if you face the building right to your left. What kind of noise does that make? And when you're saying off-hours, what do you mean off-hours?
Dave, I don't know if you have some experience from your your existing facilities and want to take that one?
Yeah, that, Steve McCarthy with Shield, so we'd be bringing that trailer in. Basically, early evening, so it's it's a seven to five, seven AM, five PM service. And, you know, where it's being transported from. We would be coming in again, early evening, depending upon the number of patients we're seeing. So it it's likely six PM to. Eight thirty. PM that it would be coming in. It's it's about a half an hour of a of a docking exercise and. Plugging in all the services. So it's, it's, it's not a long period of time.
And it's just backup alarms for the truck?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, basically, that's coming in to the right and going forward. And backing up. And that's the noise that. You know, those trailers are required, but the tractor leaves and it just sits there for. The twenty-four hours and we service the patients and. And then we're back picking that up around the same timeframe the next day.
Okay. Then the other thing is it really have to do with this one, but. I think the gentleman's name was Ryan was in operations. People like to build. I think it's been successful, but I hear more complaints about the night lights at this building. As I go about my business in town. Is the amount of light emitted by the building at night? I'll need to bring that back.
On the parking lot? No, in the building. It seems to be much more than what is required for security. It seems to be just excessively lit all hours of the night, and we've heard it many times. And this just is an opportunity for us to ask you why that is, and if you could rethink that situation.
Yeah, we can, we can take that back. We do have a. A light management system in, so it's every other light that's on. But, you know, again. When the building was built, that's what they put in.
Yeah, if you could just take that feedback back, and Dave's right, we hear about that a lot. Yeah.
So my question is, I've never heard of something like this before. Is this, is this done around? Is this done, is this a common thing? If buildings can't accommodate. This type of testing or some other type of testing, but it can be done on a trailer that you just pull up next to a facility and do this?
Yeah, Steve McCarthy with Shields again. Yeah, we do this. Pet, pet CT service at. A lot of hospital locations, a lot of freestanding outpatient healthcare facilities, like we're partnering with Hallmark. So it's very common. We're, we've got seven pet CT trailers. All in Massachusetts, traveling around servicing patients throughout the. Different communities. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's very common. It's a, and it's expensive. Equipment and it's a, it's a kind of a unique process to allow patients to go to. Their community centers, hospitals, and. Receive that service. So it's, it's very common. MRI as well, but pet CT is. Like people, like Brian had said, you know, cancer is. You get diagnosed, you want to get. Scanned, you want to see what you're, you're up against and, and. So it's very common.
But yet hospitals don't have them inside. They don't have the space.
Some, some.
Specialized and.
Some, some of the big ones do. You know, some of the very big ones do, and it's more, more expensive. It's a more expensive service and. And it's easier to to go to a nice building like the building in Wakefield here. For the community, so.
I don't know if this has been brought up. Obviously, those things require a lot of radiation. These trucks have some sort of special anti-radiation, something or other? Yes, it's. If I were a neighbor, I'd want to know.
Oh, yeah, it's all, it's all contained within the shielding of the trailer itself. There's a. There's a physicist, there's physics around it. It's. It, it's, it's very safe and regulated, so.
There's a physicist around it? I'm sorry. What was that?
There's a physicist that supports the the service. From a physics perspective, so it's very, it's regulated, it's, it's safe. It's contained within the trailer. And it's all, it's all. Kind of out in the open and right there. So there's no. There's no harm to people in the parking lot. There's no harm to the neighbors. It's. It's, it's very low, low dose radiation.
Is the, is it noisy when that thing's running or is it?
Is it? It's certainly noisy when it, when it comes in for the, for the short period of time, but it's not, it's not noisy. You know, it, it's not noisy when it sits in in place. There's a, there's an air conditioning unit, just like any other kind of building. But, but it's, it's not loud, but certainly when you drive it in and. There's that short period of time where it is.
So once he drives away, it's not, you don't have another diesel motor running it.
Twenty, you know. Okay. Nope.
Experience with a. Parent in one of these on the South Shore, and it was. Awesome to have it not have to go into the city. They eventually got sent into the city, but. It was, it was a good service.
And is it, is this service available at any other? Of the partner of Melrose Wakefield Tufts facilities? Or is this going to be, because they, you know, these hospitals have facilities all over, they're spread all over, not just. The hospital in Melrose, obviously. There's units all over the place, right? So is this the only location?
We, we are, we go into the city with, with Tufts in, in the city of Boston. And we have, we're partnered with them as well as we're looking for this opportunity here in Wakefield to obviously service. More of the, the, the Melrose Wakefield Hallmark patient base.
And I'll just jump in here. This is Ryan Fuller. He is one of the things we didn't want to send our patients into Boston if we had an opportunity to keep patients locally and even Tufts Medical Center would agree with that. So we, Melrose Wakefield itself does currently operate. A pet CT, a fixed pet CT, so not on a trailer in Stonem. But we are moving to this, would like to move to this trailer option because it allows for a higher technology. And what that means for patients is, is better access, better. Better early detection of cancer, available for more types of cancer, bigger patient base, which ultimately leads to overall better health. For our residents of Wakefield and the surrounding areas.
Understood. I just asked again because I'm. You know, part of the system, I think, as long as Memorial Hospital, right, is under the Hallmark umbrella. Underutilized, a lot of services cut back over there, right? I know Shields is over there now. But again, it. Could be inside of a building and then, you know. We're not dealing with this kind of outside thing, but it is a unique thing, and I just, it was new to me. And I just, you know, wanted to inquire kind of what the options are, what you guys have explored. So I appreciate the, the, you know, the clarity on it. And where you're coming from. Any other board members? So Brian, you applied. Hold it up here.
Apply for modification.
You applied just for the modification, okay.
That's right.
That's right.
So it's a modification of the special permit, reducing.
And site plan approval.
Uh, just really reducing from one twenty-two to one eighteen, right?
Yeah, and, and modifications to the site plan is now showing like the landscaping and stuff like that. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Anything else, board members? So we'll open it up. Public testimony, if any member of the public has a question or a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting at this time. Seeing no hands, I'll close it to public testimony. We did receive correspondence from the Concom and Wakefield, um, department, just for the record, no. No concerns or objections or comments from them.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow the modification of, of the special permit. A hundred and twenty-two parking spaces to one hundred and eighteen parking spaces. And the modifications of the site plan uh, with the removal of the island and the addition of trees that have been taken down and replaced as shown on the plan presented to us this evening.
I'll second that.
Brian, any conditions in play here from the previous decision or?
They would change.
They're all in full force, okay. All right, thanks. Um, any discussion on the motion? All right, voting members, Chip? Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Okay. That's unanimous. Your special permit is modified. Well, good luck with this service. All right.
Thanks so much.
Very much, guys.
Please look at the lights.
Your neighbors will appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tarbell.
Can I take a five-minute recess and recuse myself from the next hearing?
You can.
Thank you.
Our last new hearing. Twenty-three dash thirty-four and thirty-five. Edward B. Matthews and Lisa M. Matthews at twelve Nelson Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here on behalf of the Matthews family. Um, the property at twelve Nelson Avenue, when their favorite thing of the board, an accessory apartment application. And, um, so the Matthews are, are requesting, um, an accessory apartment. They are putting an addition on to their house, which fits very well, um, as you'll see from the plans and, and meets all of the zoning requirements. Uh, and then they want to take a portion of that and make it, uh, an accessory apartment, uh, for family members, and I'll get into a little bit of the detail about that, um, as we go, um. I think it's probably good to start with the site plan. Site plan, as you know, is really not required, but I thought where they're putting an addition on that the board would want to see this and how it works. So we did have, uh, a site plan done by PJF Engineering. Um, this is the existing house. It's a two-story house. Uh, twelve Nelson Ave, uh, and this is the addition that they're constructing. They are not seeking any relief whatsoever for this addition. It is allowed by right, as you can see from the zoning table, and the unique thing about um, the, um, Matthews property is it actually conforms to zoning. It's a twelve thousand, six hundred square foot lot. In a single residence district, twelve thousand is required. It meets the frontage requirement. Has a, over a hundred feet of frontage, meets the lot width requirement, because as you can see, it's one oh five in the back, one oh five in the front. Uh, set front setback is, is not met with the current structure, but it's legal non-conforming. Um, side, uh, is, uh, met, uh, on both sides, fifteen point one here, fifteen point three here, fifteen required. Rear easily met, um, that twenty-five is required and forty-nine is proposed. Uh, stories, it's only a two-story dwelling. That is not going to change. Height is met under thirty-five feet. Uh, open spaces easily met, uh, in block coverage, um. Maximum is thirty, as you can see, and it meets that requirement at twenty-nine point eight. So I just wanted to give you an idea of what they're doing here. Uh, part of this, um, addition is a garage, which is not included, but that part of the proposed addition. And I'll get into the details on the breakdown on this. And what they're doing is they're proposing to remove the driveway on this side of the house. Fill in the curbing and then put a driveway here with the two car garage that goes in. So that's their addition. As you'll see from the plans, the accessory apartment is proposed uh, in the addition area, probably kind of like right in this area here. So that hopefully orients you. Man, let me bring up the, uh, architectural plans. So this is the architectural plans. As you can kind of see, this is the existing house that you looked at, the box. And this is the addition, the two car garage with the mudroom and then the accessory, accessory apartment, uh, in the back. So here's the back view. Left elevation. And right elevation. So this is, this is the, this is a good idea of the floor plan. This is, is the existing house. This portion of the addition is the garage. You get the mudroom area here and the accessory is in, is in the back. It's kind of gives you a layout. So you can see the kitchen for the accessory and the living area and the two car garage. And these are just the, the framing plans. As far as a breakdown goes. I submitted this. This is the architect. He certified, or I should say the professional engineer certified as the square footage. So the, um, the existing, uh, is, uh, second floor is one oh eight eight, existing main floor eleven oh nine. Part of the new addition is the mudroom that I mentioned. Part of it is for the in-law, so the total is thirty-two twenty-nine. Garage is not included because it's not habitable area. So the in-law ratio is twenty-seven point six percent. Where twenty-five is required, so we're, we're asking for a little bit of a waiver on that, which you're, you're entitled to do under the bylaw. Then the final thing I would like to share. Is neighbor support. Which I'll send this to you, Mr. Chair. I think you can see the Matthews have, have lived in the neighborhood for quite some time. They're a very popular family. Virtually everybody uh, in the whole neighborhood is supporting this application. Um, these, amongst these addresses are, uh, direct butters on all sides. Um, each side of the house, two in the rear, and then multiple people across the street. Two across, two directly across the street. So there's significant support from the neighborhood, uh, for this project. Um, and I will send that to you, Mr. Chair, for your, for your records after the meeting. Hold me for one second. Uh, Lisa's, Lisa Matthews' parents are going to live there. Um, then William Gones, um, they are, you know, they're, they're a little bit older. Um, Mr. Wang Goan is suffering some, from, from some, um, some pretty significant metal, medical concerns, so, uh, it's becoming tough for Lisa to help outside the house. So they're, uh, the, her parents are going to move in the accessory apartment uh, with Ed and Lisa, so they can help, help, uh, care for them, which is contemplated, uh, under the bylaw. I can go over the, uh, the standards, Mr. Chair, if that's okay? So under one ninety twenty-two, uh, AF, um, the first one is it, it references that it is the intent to allow accessory apartments within one family properties to help, um, to help, um, people meet special needs and needs of families, which I just explained is happening here. Um, number two, the accessory apartment may be created only within a single-family dwellings, which are located on lots, meaning minimum lot area and with requirements of the applicable zone. That requirement is met here. Uh, owner occupancy required, the owners of one, uh, the owners of the one family lot upon which the accessory apartment locate, is located shall occupy at least one of the units, which Lisa and Ed are. Um, and it's going to, has to be issued to the owner, and it references, as you know, change of ownership. Um, and covenant and renewal on a yearly basis, which they acknowledge and we agree to. Um, or is it should be issued on a year-to-year basis and should not be new with a need for the, it no longer exists and, and usually the board will waive the bond requirement, uh, which we're requesting for here. Um, five, an accessory apartment must be located in the principal dwelling, provided the such, which the principal dwelling conforms to the other requirements of this chapter unless a variance shall have been granted. Um, which we are requesting as part of this, as you'll see. Um, the apartment size, the minimum, um, uh, floor area. The accessory apartment with the principal dwelling shall be three hundred square feet, which this is, but in no case shall exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable area of the dwelling in which it is located, unless in the opinion of the board, a greater or lesser amount of floor is warranted by the specific circumstances of the particular building. So we're requesting waiver in that regard. Uh, seven is what we're requesting a variance from, um, where it says the accessory apartment shall not involve the extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling, except to provide access to regress, not shall change the, uh, single-family characteristic of the dwelling. We are requiring, we are requesting a variance from this because of, I mentioned they're able to put that addition on by right with no relief. Um, and I think it does not, clearly does not change the single-family characteristic of the dwelling. Um, it's in the back of the building. You can't even see it. It certainly looks like a single-family dwelling, which it is with an accessory, but the character of that, it's actually probably enhancing the character by adding the mudroom to the two car garage. Um, from a frontage standpoint. Um, number eight, there shall be no more than one accessory apartment for a total of two dwellings, units per, per lot, which is happening here. Uh, and finally, applications for accessory apartments shall be subject to approval solely by the board of the feels. Um, so we're respectfully requesting the grant of the special permit to allow the accessory apartment and a variance um, from, uh, the requirement, uh, that, um, of section seven, which I read, which is it should not involve an extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling. And a waiver of the twenty-five percent to allow it to be twenty-seven and change as presented.
Okay. Comments or questions, board members?
The, uh, unless a variance therefore shall have been granted, because it, it's the it doesn't, he said it doesn't. The, the front setback doesn't already, right?
Yeah, but that's legal non-conforming.
But no variances were provided there for. So I mean, eh, either way, this project is fine, but don't you need a variance from it the way it's written?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would look at that. I mean, that's an interesting point, Greg. I, I would look at it that's, you know, i- i- and it says, provided that such principle conforms to other requirements of this chapter, I would say it's legal non-conforming. I mean, so it conforms to that perspective. Um, I think, I think you're saying that i- i- if, if, if you meet the lot width and lot uh, eerie requirements, i- if your house doesn't meet a setback, you need a variance from that setback to do an accessory apartment would be an example.
That's the way I read it. And not, not that it's, it's a, an, an issue in this case, but.
No, I know. It's, I'm, it's a, it's a good discussion. It's, it's, uh.
And especially with, I think, also from the point that it is legal non-conforming, other than you say it's legal non-conforming, but there's, there's been a presented evidence of it being the legal part of that, so. I think it would just be easier to request a variance from that section.
I'm happy to take it. I mean, we've requested a variance, uh, from whatever section we need, so we can get that, so.
Unless anyone else has an issue with that, I mean, I'm to any problem with it, but.
It's just the frontage, right? Yeah, let me go back to the chart just to make sure, now that Greg raises that, hang on a second, um, real quick.
That, that's what you said before, but yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I didn't mistake that, Greg. I know that doesn't meet it, but I want to make sure there's nothing else that's a problem. Yeah, misses it by like an inch, because nineteen nine, but it doesn't meet it. Um, so at the table, it meets the, uh, lot, uh, area, meets the frontage. Uh, doesn't meet the front setback, meets the side on both sides, meets the rear, meets the height. Meets the, uh, open space. And meets the lock coverage, just barely meets the lock coverage, but meets it. Yeah, meets the lot width because it's got a hundred and five on each end, so. It's clearly a hundred through. So yeah, that will be the only thing, Greg.
So Brian, my only comment is basically you, you could have did that addition by right and then come to us for the accessory apartment, but you're just doing it all at once.
Yeah, and you've seen that, Joe, before.
No, I know.
Yeah, eh, you know, and I think the board has had the discussion on this, on whether you're going to entertain these or not. And when you said that you, you know, you would do it on a one-by-one basis. But it would be something that you would entertain, and I think especially where, you know, we're not looking for variances to put the addition on.
Yeah.
Um, to then create the in-law, meets the requirement.
I've said my piece on this before and I still stand by it. This is not the intent of the bylaw. So I won't support this, period. I won't re- support any in the future either. I just don't see it. It's been a workaround. We're seeing a lot of these workarounds. I don't like it. The intent is there, but do it right.
Anyone else? All right, I'm not sure who's left from the public, but I will open it up to public testimony. I'm not seeing any hands being raised. I'll close it to public testimony. So Chip, you were, um, I don't know when you came back, but you said you were going to recuse yourself anyway.
I'll recuse myself. I missed half of it, so.
Yeah. So we need either Greg or Mike. Mike's raising his hand. Mike gets it. Okay. All right, so the voting members on this, Dave, Jim, Joe, Tom and Mike. So, um, so if you've been taking notes, we'll need a motion, again, two motions. Um, for the special permit, we probably want to do the variance first because it's contingent on getting that variance, um, to grant the special permit. And the variance would be from that chapter seven for the enlargement and then the front setback, I guess. Um, and then we can do the special permit. Tom, you're a mute.
Mickey, you want to take a shot? Do you want me to?
Go for it, Tom.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to grant the variance under section one twenty, one ninety twenty-two, sections five and seven. Uh, related to the Wakefield zoning bylaw. For, to create an accessory apartment as shown in the plans submitted by Matthews residence dated. I can't see the date on that, uh, nine thirty twenty-two?
Check, Tom, hold on.
Check Tom, hold on.
In twenty-two twenty-two?
It's really kind of faded, I can't.
On the architectural plans?
Yeah.
Uh, site plan says nine twenty-two, Rev. nine twenty-two.
Nine thirty twenty-two on the architectural plan.
And then the site plan dated.
I'm going to tell you that, hold on. That, that's dated, uh, that's dated nine tw- uh, that's dated September sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, final revision date eleven twelve twenty-two. And I'm gonna s- send that to you, it's two days.
That's the motion.
Second up.
Any discussion? Okay, uh, voting members, Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes, so it passes by a vote of four to one. Now the special permit.
I'd make a motion that we approve a special permit, uh, under Article. For section one ninety twenty-two, one F. That, uh, an accessory apartment to a single-family dwelling is shown in the plans described in the variants. Ready more than that, Dave?
I don't think so.
Okay. That's the motion then.
Okay, seconded, any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
No.
Mike?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. So that two passes by a count of four to one. All right. Accessory apartment is granted with the variances.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, Mr. Matthews, I see you on the call still. Thanks for your patience. Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll take care.
Thank you.
All right, board members, all right, that's it for the new hearings. Other matters? With sixty-nine foundry was continued, as stated several hours ago. Um, any other matters this evening? Approval of minutes of October twenty-sixth then.
I move that we approve the minutes of October twenty-sixth as written.
Any discussion? All right, uh, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Well done, Gail.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, uh, we are all done for the evening. Appreciate everyone's time. Earlier than I thought it was actually. So not bad.
Uh, I have one more motion, Mr. Chairman.
Um, what, to adjourn?
No.
Oh, okay.
I move that we set the date of. January, um, January fourth, maybe January eighteenth. As an opportunity to go out together as a group. And celebrate the past year. And all that Gail has done for us and everything else that we. Maybe to the public kitchen or somewhere in town. Uh, as being a Wednesday night in between our two January meetings.
Somewhere where we, when we talk, we can hear each other, please.
Well, just pre-hearing aid in, it will be okay.
It's open on my calendar, why don't we?
Will your wife like to stay up that late?
Oh, no, this is a five-thirty dinner.
Early bread for you, Chip, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Like, I need to do it for Jim. Jim doesn't really start dinner much before five-thirty-five.
You need to leave work a little bit earlier, otherwise you may not make it.
That is true.
Yeah. It looks open on my calendar. If, if it looks open, everyone else, let's pencil it in and we'll, we'll sync up.
We didn't talk about it on December, but I thought, get, let's get in front of it.
Sounds good.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, we do need a motion to adjourn. Yeah.
Second.
Everyone, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. The meeting is adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good night. Have a good one.
Happy Thanksgiving.